I mean, well, my phone says nine thirty. If I get IT to change my phone.
Strike the sound.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call them in to order. It is Wednesday, December eleventh, 2024. Please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do you have any minutes or reports?
I do not.
Okay, I think we will forego our different events and things like that. I doubt anything's changed.
I don't know, I got the Christmas card from sheriff. I want to thank him for putting down Skyboy's car on there. It's pretty cool.
Everyone make accounts for them.
Nice start. They need as much help as they can get right now.
Okay, so we will move into bids and contracts. The renewal of property cash between liability for 2025, we are tabling until tomorrow afternoon at 1:30. So we will go to approval and signing of ARPA agreement, IAA, inter-agency.
I'm sorry, I just gave it to Jill to review. This is something new that Forbes came up with through the requirements of the ARPA, that if we had money that was intergovernment from one department to another, and that still wasn't obligated by 1231, that this would take care of the obligation between the ARPA money and that particular department. So I'll probably go ahead and put that on the next agenda.
No.
Debbie, it's not that long.
No.
And hey, it's a work order, it's a work for me.
Yeah.
Is that just ours, or is it everybody?
It's really just your department, and this is under that five million umbrella. It's not anything else that that can be used for. So it's basically, again, it's an intergovernment between the county commission and Public Works. And it's a budget amount that's higher than what's out there for the stormwater projects. So we won't have any problem with, you know, any money left, because there's more projects than money left, if that makes sense. And I think on there's attachment of the projects that Eric gave me and the total. So it basically just protects the money so that it wouldn't have to go back.
Doing this is pretty helpful for us. We had a project that was kind of a backup. As I've explained, we'd have, we've had difficulties getting through the bureaucratic process with Corps of Engineers for the primary projects we've been trying to do with these funds. It's just gonna take a while to get through that process. We had a backup project, that's the Lakewood Stormwater Project. We could have advertised it at the beginning of the year. We would have opened December 27th, and it was cramming everything in last minute. We didn't really feel comfortable. Debbie came to us and said, hey, we got a way to not do that, make sure we do it right. Gives us ability to go into 2025 to award a contract. So this will be pretty helpful for us, and we can still award that contract. It'll just be sometime, we'll bid it in January or February.
I'll make a motion that the commission sign the Cole County inter-agency agreement, the IAA, between the commission and the Public Works Department, as advised by Forbes, our consultant on the ARPA funding.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, new business. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number thirteen.
This is for $50,000. It's the EMS Enterprise Fund for additional fees that they brought in. So I do need action today.
I'll make a motion to approve budget adjustment number thirteen for the EMS Enterprise Fund for $50,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion and approval of access control proposal for Public Works facility.
So two weeks ago, the county commission meeting, we brought an idea to you. As we've been working on replacing the concrete pavement at our lot there at the shop, we've had to take the gate down. There is a little bit of reworking of the gate to reinstall it. We gotta cut a new detector loop in. At that, while we're doing that, now is the time to look at ultimate upgrades to the system. Explain that right now, there's a punch, a number that you punch in to get in the gate, and that hasn't changed since 2018 or so when we installed it. So that number's out there, not the best, most secure situation. Worked with Brian. He was able to get us in contact with SWC, that does security for most of the county facilities. And I had them come out last week, they gave us a proposal. And so what this will do, it will add access control to the main building and the second building at the complex there at Monticello Road. It will also add access control to the gate. So anybody coming in, you won't punch in the number. The number pad will be there as an emergency backup, and only, we'll change the number, and like myself, and maybe other sheriff and EMS director may know the code. So it'd be very minimal, who knows that code? And we can change it anytime. But primary access would be through a similar system to getting into the doors here in the building. Just swipe it at the gate, and it'll open kind of like it is now, and can close behind you, or it can stay open. We can program it to stay open during the day, it'll open automatically. As far as the doors go to the, to the shop and the secondary shop, same thing. We can program those to be open during normal working hours. They'll, they'll shut, or they'll lock after that. Program them on holidays to be not open. There's a lot of programming capabilities there. We can do it remotely if we have to. The benefit to sheriff and EMS and anybody that needs to access the fuel pumps after hours is they can go inside the building if they need to just take a break, if it's really cold out or something, or use the restroom facilities or whatever, they would have access to that, and we would know who's coming and going. It doesn't give them access to the whole building, because that's locked and under, under, it's an emergency alarm, a security alarm, so. But the, the main areas where they would, would need to be able to use would be accessible. So got the rough cost, not rough, some of it's a proposal. So SWC, their proposal is $27,430.30. And then Williams Gate Services to come back in, reset everything, and set the key pad or the swipe pad will have an upper and a lower for the larger trucks, plus cars and pickups on a lower, like what the one is right now. Their, their cost is $4,688.77. When we do the striker plates for the security system, we need to upgrade some of our doors. Some of our doors have been there since the building was built, our buildings were built. And so there's three doors that we would replace, and they're pretty solid, heavy-duty steel doors with, with door jamb and threshold and everything. And so estimated about $2,000 each, could be a little more, probably not less. So overall, the net cost is $38,000 and some change. SWC indicated to me that they could start eight to 10 weeks once we sign a proposal, so it's into next year. I asked that this be put on the budget last minute, or put on the, the agenda last minute yesterday, because this does have budget implications going forward. So just some decisions need to be made as far as if we're gonna do it, and if we are, what budget it comes out of, and then also, or as far as this year or next year, and then what fund it comes from. I will say, Williams Gate, they are gonna be here Thursday or Friday to start resetting the gate. Everything should be back in operational as it was before by Monday. Concrete's down, it'll be open by Monday. So I think the gate company, they could have that ready by Monday as well. So that would be an expense we would incur this year, but all the security stuff and access and everything would be next year. I think I gave you about as much information as I know. Brian, Sheriff, do you have anything to add?
I concur, you need it. I'm, I'm all for it.
Well, I talked to SWC yesterday, just to kind of see where that number was coming from. And there's a lot of labor that's gonna go into getting the doors outfitted for the access control and things like that, the gate, the programming, because you're not just doing the one facility, you're doing two, right? You're doing the sign shop, what they call sign shop out back. And then the main facility, and then the gate. So, so after, we kind of went through the, the quote, I didn't have any heartburn, but the technician that actually went through and did the survey, site survey, we've dealt with for longer than I've been here, and he's always pretty much been spot on. And the reason why I like this idea is because it's actually something that we can help administer. You can have a local admin out there on your side, but then we can also have a high flyover ability. So, and it does integrate fully with our current system.
Are we the only building that does not have access control like this?
No, there are others that do not have access control, yeah. But since I've been here, I've been migrating the buildings over to our security system. So the Health Department has the same system. EMS, both buildings have the same system. The sheriff has his own because of the, you know, what he has going on over there with the jail and everything.
It works sometimes.
It will?
Is this on some type of contract?
Yeah, this is actually just an extension of our current, what we have our current agreement. So we already buy things from SWC, so we're just adding on to that. We're not, it's not anything new. This is something that, we're literally adding doors.
So we own the software just to add more licensing to it?
Right, yeah. Yeah, we, we currently already have that agreement in place with them. We're just adding, adding licensing.
So will we need to run a sole source or something to that, Jill?
Yeah, yes. Because this isn't from the current agreement. Kind of like you do when you add on the century.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I figure we try to do something.
So if you look at this, so what I provided at the very end is the proposal for Williams Gate. And that would be, that's $4,688.77, so we can process that one. This one, if we do sole source and sign the proposal first of the year or something, it only pushes the, pushes us back a few weeks.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's a problem.
They'll get it done.
Yeah.
I, I would say, in that particular case, I just ask for the sole source approval today.
Okay.
Know what you're doing?
Yeah.
Need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Make a motion to advertise this improvement and do the sole source application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we brief.
On the gate, I do have a proposal here. Again, it's $4,688.77.
That would have to be done either way, as far as the systems?
Yeah, I mean, it's under, we don't need to do sole source on this, because it's under.
But I mean, we would do the gates no matter what.
We have to do the gates, yeah. They're coming Thursday, so.
Do you need some approval on that, or not?
Do you want it out of the county's system?
I don't remember, where did we take the original gate out of?
Who was the vendor?
It was Williams Gate Services.
Sorry, you said that.
They put it in originally, too. I know we're maxed out on our highway maintenance facility budget line item. I think we added a little more money to cover the concrete work that we have right now. So if we're gonna take it out of the 211, we'll have to just account for those. That's true.
Didn't you renew the nickel charge per gallon?
Yes.
None of this is gonna pay for, for the end of the year.
True, yeah, so.
I just assume I do any budget adjustments.
Okay.
Any more budget adjustment for this year, it's not gonna get paid for, because we do cash basis budgeting. So got a lot, I know a lot more adjustments to close out the year already.
Right.
You guys paid for $154,925.
Is that highway maintenance?
Yeah. Back in 19, I mean, you made some other payments, but you guys did do that.
So we'll just keep that like it is. Security, that could be.
Whole different thing.
Whole different thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's, I would ask for approval of this proposal. I will say that it's, it's a digital signature, so I can get that document to you, Sam, to sign it. And I'll send it to Jill, too. But if you just wanna. Yeah, it doesn't print out very good. That's, if you notice, it's.
For the wording.
So what are you doing on the steel door replacement? Because that's over the.
Yeah, well, those, we won't have those in until next year, so we can just take that out of our highway maintenance facility. And when we get to talking about budget, I do have some numbers in there. That was one that we asked for a little more funding last week for, so we can discuss that shortly.
Okay, so you just need a sole source for the SWC and then approval for the Williams Gates today?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Williams Gate Services LLC estimate, authorize Public Works to pay $4,688.77 for that product.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What are you saying, I'm gonna do a docu-sign?
I'll send it to Jill, Jill, if you wanna work with Sam to get that signed.
Yeah.
And go ahead and sign the hard copy and give it to Matt for the clerk's office records.
Okay.
Just so they have evidence that you approved it and signed it.
I'll just sign it so they don't have to sign it, so I'll just sign it at the bottom and serve. Okay, do we have anything else to come before, before we go into budget?
Close session.
Oh, we're gonna do that?
I would do that.
Okay, yes. I would entertain a motion to go in close session.
So what is the close?
Secret.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following. Real estate, under Section 610.021, subsection two.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna second it. Can we do that after we're done with budget, since we have everybody here? Or is this gotta be done now?
I think it has to be done.
Eric? It's Eric from there.
Okay, that's what I was, I said, so it's the, I know what you're talking about now, so.
Yes.
Will it take a long time?
No. This will not take long.
I've heard that before.
Well, just remember, we're all standing outside.
Get a couple.
I did, but I think maybe she just wanted to get it, it was that, how you want it?
Public Works.
Do you wanna go back through everyone again, or just, you just got specific? I guess we really need to go, we, we didn't go through everyone, yeah.
I mean, just get everything pulled out here.
At least bring them up or mention all of the departments, see if we got any questions on them. County Planning Department, we're on page 53, start with that. Other than maybe salaries, I don't think there's really, is there anything else?
Let me get resituated here, hold on.
We're gonna increase the permit revenue.
Yes, I had suggested that we increase the revenue on the permits to 100, $100,000. It was a minor amount.
Everything else, I think was.
And I will say that, and I mentioned it last week, we will advertise for a building inspector, probably the first of the year. Okay. And that's, as it stands now in our, in our salary schedule, it's $52,000. I have a feeling that that's gonna be hard to attract anybody at that, that salary. That ties into a larger discussion about salaries, so just keep that on the radar. But we did put it in there for 52.
Line items or anything else on planning? Page 53. Good? Parks is where? 89, page 90, actually. I don't, I didn't take any notes last week on, extra notes on that last week, is everything?
One thing we were tight on, that we may want to increase even a little bit more, was the meeting, travel and dues. So we sent our park supervisor to a certification class for playground inspection, and it's something that we need to do regularly. We can hire that out, but we felt like it would be worthwhile to have him go. I don't know if that'll end up in additional, like recertifications every year. We also send him to the Missouri Parks and Recreation yearly conference. I think that's down in Springfield typically. It may rotate around the state. Right now, we've spent $2,454.33 this year. So just a, maybe a small additional ask of bring it up to $2,500 instead of 2,200.
Oh, this was new just this year, because your, your original budget was $1,400 this year.
Yeah, the class, to get him through this class, and that might just be a, a one-time expense that isn't gonna be recurring. But I feel like training is, is gonna be, as we go forward with that department training, just keeping that up to date is gonna be pretty important, so.
Have we ever talked to State Tech about maybe doing something with parks and grass and different things? I know they've got different programs. I don't know if we ever talked about seeing if they wanted to let their students work on stuff out there, or possibly try different stuff, turf management, whatever.
I don't think they have a parks program. I know they have turf and grounds and management, and that's.
It's almost a turf park.
Golf courses.
No turf.
It is kind of golf, we got frisbee golf, disc golf, whatever it's called.
I mean, it includes some landscaping items.
Well, we don't give you a whole lot for parks, so I'm just trying to find other ways to help.
I think the overall discussion, can we bring more partners into what we do? The answer is yes. We do utilize JC Parks for advice on different things, assistance, whatever it is. We do have that partnership there. State Tech is a great resource for, for us. Can we bring them in to do some, do some things for us? Probably. I, I have not investigated that.
So who, who did the planning for the parking lot there?
We did it ourselves.
And who's "we"?
Owen Kleppel and Spencer Katz. Who came from State Tech.
Always gotta know who "we" is, you know?
And so, yeah, we've, we've hired our, two of our, some of our more recent hires over the past couple of years have been from State Tech. So building a relationship there would be good. Can we implement some of what they do? Can they come here and do some work with us? Probably. Looking on down the road, if there's additions to our park system, you know, maybe, then that would be a good opportunity there. But it's one of those things, you just gotta reach out and have a conversation.
Reach out, maybe one day you need a berm or a mound moved? Maybe they would like to do that with their heavy equipment people?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So it's something we'll look into, yes, definitely.
Okay with that amount, 2,500 on it, on meeting?
Okay, and then.
Travel dues.
And then the only other item, and I, we talked about it last time, make sure we carry forward the $755 donation.
Under park maintenance, right?
Yes, correct.
Parks? Sure. I know salary will be the big discussion. Do, is there, should we knock off capital first?
Let's get through everything first, and then I can tell you where, where I feel I'm at on salaries. I know other departments have had the conversation last day and whatever, so. On the road and bridge side, 211.
I know what you said in your original memo, I think we changed. I think I did go ahead and pencil that in from last week.
Which, under which, the different items we asked for?
Yeah, I think so. So I don't think there was any. Well, I guess it wouldn't hurt to go through all.
We'll just go through tool, tool and shop supplies at 53295.
What page?
94. Road and Bridge budget starts on 90, 93 is all the revenues, and then 94, 95 is, 94, 95 is all the expenses.
I had asked that we bump that from $55,000 to $65,000. We had submitted $95,000, took out the four-post lift, but we need a little more funds to outfit two mechanics with the tool chest and everything else.
Okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we were doing something different before, too. You're trying to just get the tools out to shop instead of for the individual allowance or something, right?
Right now, they get a stipend, so what we would propose, and it, it ties into the salary a little bit, too. And we'll, we'll pay the stipend until those come in, and then that stipend will go away. We'll still have one stipend, we have the three mechanics, the supervisor and the two mechanics. We'll, next year, we'll outfit the third with the tool, tool chest and everything, and so that stipend will go away also.
Yeah, I'm good with that, that's a good move.
Okay.
County-owned, yes, and it'll be engraved with the number, and so it, you know, can't really walk off or anything like that. It'll be, they'll be locked and everything, so. This is good going forward, that way we can have everything that they need to do heavy equipment maintenance.
No, I'm looking, waiting for another item here to pop up.
Highway maintenance facility?
I was actually, I'm just curious on fuel.
On fuel?
Fuel.
The numbers, fuel has gone down. Just the overall cost, cost of fuel has gone down. So our expenditure decreased about, what we recommended, by about $68,000, but then the revenue also decreased, too.
Charge in other departments.
We can't, not sure where that's at in the revenue.
First page. Fuel, fueling reimbursement. It is down, yeah, definitely down from what was budgeted this year, and we've reduced that estimate for next year, too, this year.
So our, our vehicles are, make up the bulk of the fuel. EMS is pretty close to sheriff as well. EMS go into gas motors, getting away from diesel will help bring, bring the cost down. Most of our stuff is diesel, but diesel costs have come down for the last year or so. And we use US Department of Energy recommended outlook for energy costs for '25. We look at those in August of 2024, so it's, it's really kind of a guess, honestly, because you just don't know for sure.
Can you track how much the county has realized from the two and a half, two and a half, two and a half? Is there a way to do that, or do you care?
Yes, and you'd have to look, you're talking about the, the gas tax increase. You'd have to look at, we projected somewhere around $150,000 a year increase. That's a hard one to say it's gonna be exact that.
Is that when it's fully phased in, at 12 and a half?
We, we were estimating about $750,000 when it's fully phased in. We got one more year to go on that. We probably won't get to that. This year, we're only seeing, we only estimated a $60,000 increase over last year.
So how did that drop so significantly then, from 750 to 60,000?
We go off of what MODA provides us.
I think you meant 750 a total over the.
Total, yeah.
Over the.
Over the five-year period, yeah. Roughly $150,000 each year increase over what the previous year was. Follow me?
So we had a $60,000 increase on that two and a half cent the last time, so instead of $150,000, we're $60,000 a year?
No, just for this upcoming year.
Because of the change.
Why wouldn't it be the same if it's increasing two-and-a-half cents? I mean, I know that's probably not a you question, but that, I don't-
The, the use of, uh, electric vehicles is, is one of them, uh, fewer miles traveled throughout the state.
So, then it should keep going down, or, or the other years would've?
The formula changes, too. It's based on assessed, there's a weird formula they use, and it's all state statute. It's the County Aid Road Trust, and it's an assessed valuation of your property.
That formula sucks, too.
And we get, we get, every, every county will get a portion of that, and that formula looks-
Based upon the assessed valuation of the county?
Part of it, part of it's incorporated road, or roads in incorporated areas, which-
Road mileage, yeah.
We have a lot of that in incorporated areas, so it seems like it, maybe the small towns get a little more from it, but it doesn't seem like it evens out. There's two portions of that formula.
Don't the cities get some of that?
Mm-hmm.
So, if it's incorporated, I don't know how they figure it, but. There's a separate county CART, County Aid Road Trust. There's this kind of, I think there's a separate, separate formula for counties.
Yeah, it's-
Separate pool of money for counties, it's divvied up, and then, I mean, cities, cities also get some of the two, it's figured a little differently. The state gets seventy percent of the hundred percent.
Is that it?
Cities and counties get the thirty, and now they split it. I'm not sure.
We also get motor vehicle sales tax, too. This is just the, the CART.
Right.
The motor fuel tax.
Okay, so, what does it start, four years ago, with the two-and-a-half cent sales tax? So, it increased, say it increased to a hundred fifty then, and now it's only sixty thousand, but are we getting sixty thousand on this next two-and-a-half cent, and only sixty thousand on the first two-and-a-half?
Uh, in twenty-twenty-three, the final amount was one million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, and then it looks like projected twenty-four is one million, one ninety-one, so it didn't go up that much, but then projected.
Uh, let's see, we're at twenty, we'll be over one point. We get, we got one more payment coming, and it should be a hundred, at least a hundred thousand. I think we'll be at, we'll be at one point two-
Two-something.
Two, three million probably, about the end of this year. So, it would've gone up, yeah, sixty thousand.
I don't have much for you on that. I mean, it's, it's all, it's what we get. Um, it's hard to project exactly, and you just don't know in one year from the next on how much the increase is gonna be.
Is every month variable a bit?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
How do they know how much to give you if people haven't submitted their refunds yet? That comes around in July, so maybe we have to pay some back into it?
We don't pay back in.
No.
They hold back, probably.
So, they hold it back the next payment, okay.
I don't know how they would, uh, allocate that refund, uh, to, you know, which county or which city or-
That's what I'm trying to figure out, how they pay it out when they don't know what the refund's gonna be. Some people do it, and most people obviously don't, but.
I don't know, we may have, uh, Cole Countyans go somewhere else to buy their gas, right?
Well, I'd say most of them do if they're in Camden or County or Morgan County, 'cause you get down at the lake, it's ten, twenty, thirty cents cheaper.
Yeah, there at Mack, when we were there, it was three fifty-nine a gallon.
Two fifty-nine.
Or two fifty-nine a gallon, like, when I filled up, came back and stole the two eighty-nine.
Didn't really matter, I mean, it's all the whole state all combined, so it doesn't really matter what the price is.
Two sixty-nine. Well, it's per gallon, so.
Yeah.
You get twenty gallons here or twenty gallons there, it's still-
You're still paying the same tax.
Yeah. Is it twelve-and-a-half now, or is that next year that?
It's next year.
I think July one, next year is twelve.
One more bump?
Yeah.
All right, I didn't get too far down the weeds. It frustrates me, though, 'cause I don't like-
I know, I bought a hybrid from a car that was a gas guzzler, so I'm buying less gas, so.
Okay. The electricity, electricity line items, um, they're five-three-two-nine-eight. I did mention that Amarin has submitted for a rate increase with the PSC. You know, those, don't know where, I think I definitely-
We didn't have a dollar.
I didn't have a dollar now, 'cause we don't know if it'll happen or not, but.
I bumped them all up a little bit, yeah.
Okay. Just to be prepared for that.
Yeah.
Um, let's go to highway maintenance facility.
Page. Ninety-five. It's one of the last, it's like under capital outlay.
Five-four.
Five-four-nine-two-five.
That's a hundred thousand, yeah.
You're, you asked, I already put it at a hundred fifty.
Based on our conversation last week, yes. So, that included, uh, upper lot improvements, and this is some pavement for the spreader stand. So, as we've upgraded our, our trucks and getting, getting new spreaders, right now, we have this rack that they all hang on, and it's, needs to move on, so we, we are buying spreaders that actually have a built-in stand, so you just tilt the bed, comes out, and you just drive off, and it stands right there. So, a lot more efficient, a lot easier, a lot safer for employees to hook up and dismount. So, but they do need to sit on pavement, and so we're running out of, of room to put those to where it actually works. So, as we, um, start planning our long-range plan for our facility, um, we'll integrate some new pavement up on top to set those on. So, we did include some money for that, that was ninety thousand dollars. And then, just some general building repairs, uh, we put in ten thousand. With the concrete work that we did just now, uh, there's a little more that we need to do next year to complete that lower lot around the fuel pumps and everything. Uh, it doesn't take care of every, uh, bit of driving surface on the lower lot. We're just gonna do that over the course of the next few years. Uh, this is just an incremental process, and, uh, just don't wanna spend too much in any given year. We just do it gradually, so it's not a big hit to our budget. So, we estimated about another fifty thousand dollars to take care of the remaining amount of pavement, and if, if this is approved with this one fifty in there, we have the Concrete Repair Services, uh, contract already bid, so it's just a matter of having our contractor, we can give them the price, they sign the quote, and if, if it works out over the, the winter period, uh, we, we can go and get that for it early next year, so finish that out. Now, as we, we brought in the conversation about the gate and the security, um, we need to discuss, is the security system itself, is that a two-eleven expense? Is that an eight-oh-six expense or other general revenue? So, just want some feedback on where you, where you think that ought to be.
I'd say any continuing licensing or whatever, should be two-eleven. One-time, yeah.
One-time.
Any one-time costs. I guess it could come out of capital improvement, sales tax. Eighty-five percent or the fifteen percent?
The fifteen percent.
I think it would be eighty-five.
Historically, it's eighty-five for-
Project, road, bridge projects. I understand. Okay. It's, it's, okay.
It's pretty tight on his project list, considering ours is probably not as tied down, let's put it that way, to particular things.
Pedal, road, I mean, I'm, that's your decision. You can use pedal, road, bridge. It's not a road, and it's not a bridge.
What line are we looking at specifically?
Well, anything related to the operation of, of road, of the road and bridge department.
Okay, so we're still talking about those improvements to the facility?
Mm-hmm.
And taking those from fifteen versus eighty-five?
I mean, we pay their salaries, we pay their, uh, whatever, administration, that relates to all these-
I would not-
Capital improvement projects comes out of road and bridge, so, I mean, whatever, it's, it's either, either or.
I don't recommend a facility improvement coming out of eighty-five percent.
I don't either.
Going forward, is that something we wanna consider for our facility itself? We need to probably put that in the information, put out it when we do the, do the vote.
We could make the connection, but I just, I don't think we should come into that.
I mean, you could move this, um, within road and bridges fund to the one hundred fifty thousand, and then the access control be added to our capital, if that-
On your side?
Yeah, on our fifteen, if that's acceptable to you guys, 'cause we do pay for that on most buildings, except for the sheriff, I think, any EMS. We do pay for the access control.
One-time expenses.
One-time, right, the ongoing maintenance would come back out of two-eleven.
Those aren't only two choices where that comes from, those, the eighty-five and fifteen, there's other revenue streams.
No, I meant not, not out of the eighty-five, out of our fifteen or out of his budget itself.
For this, thirty-seven, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand, I said, but, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not following, so what's the thirty-seven, twenty-five?
It's the access control that we were just talking about, doing that sole source on.
Oh, that's not the line number here, okay.
If I could wind the clock back forty years, uh, it would say eighty-five percent for the county, and, I'm sorry, eighty-five percent for public works, and fifteen percent, uh, but it's not public works, it's road and bridge.
Improvements.
Which is a part of public works, so, okay, you got me on the language.
And we live by those brochures.
No, but we can going forward in twenty-twenty-seven, if we wanna make a, make a slight change of that.
Yeah, okay.
That, that can be part of the conversation going forward, and it's, it's a legitimate, you know, expense to put towards that, because everything that we do on the capital improvements on roads and bridges comes out of our building, for the, you know, for the most part. So, you know, the operations of that, if we present it to the public, and that's what we're gonna do, then I, I think that would be fine, but for right now, today, you know, my preference would be that it come out of the fifteen percent, so the eight-oh-six fund.
I'll go with you on that way for the next two years.
Okay.
Right.
As to what dollar amount, or what project?
The twenty-
The twenty-seven?
So, the gate, um, since you said we originally paid for it out of two-eleven, just keep that together with that.
Okay.
Uh, the general eight-oh-six, two-eleven on some of these is a little, can be a little confusing, um, but get in some direction going forward.
The maintenance of, of, once it's installed, I think it belongs to-
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, operating expenses need to come out of two-eleven. Eight-oh-six is ca, it's capital improvement sales tax, so that needs to be a capitalized on, on basis. And that's coming out of fifteen percent.
Yeah.
So, you're saying eight-oh-six for the gate?
No, eight-oh-six for the software.
Access control, equipment and software.
The part we approved, uh, sole, sole source today? Okay, so then what are you proposing, the highway maintenance facility? Is that, is that part of this hundred, hundred, did you change it to a hundred and fifty?
He's asking.
Last week, yeah.
For other things.
Fifty thousand to cover the additional concrete that we need to do to, to finish off our concrete project around the fuel pumps in our lower lot.
That does or does not include the maintenance or the software for the gates?
Does not.
Does not.
So, I got the impression that the ongoing software licensing would be handled through Brian?
Brian, okay.
Yeah.
It would be better, he can control it, he can make sure we're up today, yeah, that-
That, that's, that's separate from this twenty-seven. This is to outfit our facility with everything we need, need to, to have full access control. Then it becomes a, a maintenance licensing, um, situation with Brian.
I mean, he does most of the other ones, general fund, that, you know, right? And they pay for their own maintenance, EMS pays for their own maintenance.
Maybe that's something we ought to take a look at, though, 'cause-
Yeah.
Anything similar to that, they pay out of long-forcing fund or EMS fund.
It's to operate, yeah. I'd still say it belongs in two-eleven, but, I mean, if it's not in there, we can put the money in there, but it's gonna be free the first year, right? Should be, because it's included in the price. We can always put that out of capital the first year. After that, it's gonna have to go in here. I'll talk to Brian about it, though.
Okay, but as far as the twenty-seven thousand, it's, it's next year's budget, no matter what. It's just whatever fund it comes out of.
First of all, are you okay with the hundred fifty?
Yes.
That was in his original money? Okay, I'll go with that, okay.
Yeah, we got that last week, yeah.
Now, we're just talking about adding to it possibly with the, oh, well, adding to it for sure with the gate.
The gate, I, I think we got, well, we, we had ninety thousand in there for concrete up on the upper lot for spreader stands.
Okay.
I think there's enough wiggle room that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do X amount of concrete up in the upper lot, whatever money we have. It's gonna have to continue over the next few years to get everything like we need it, so, you know, if we gotta move a little around to cover the gate next year, that's not big, it's a minor amount, we can fit that in. I'm happy just with the one fifty, let's just leave it at that.
Sounds good. The twenty-seven, whatever, in the capital, fifteen percent.
Twenty-seven, roughly?
Yeah. Just twenty-seven, five, then.
Seven-five, add that to the-
To your list there.
So, that's part of the capital. Then where's this one fifty coming from?
His fund, then, not me, his.
For highway maintenance, the one fifty, that's in the-
Not page ninety-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, page ninety-five, two-eleven, fifty-four, nine-twenty-five, highway maintenance facility, hundred fifty thousand.
Yes.
You're okay with that?
And it's coming from?
Road and bridge.
'Cause I thought you were asking if it's coming from the fifteen percent.
No, the addition-
Now, we're talking about the security system.
I already talked about it.
Addition to that. Well, where do we wanna pay? The question is, where do you want to pay that from?
My question was, where did this others come from? I thought we already said the security was coming from the capital improvement.
Okay.
Okay.
Right?
We were just confirming that.
We're just confirming that.
Okay, confirm for me where highway maintenance comes from. I'm not following this.
Two-eleven.
Well, it's all in two-eleven. So, the two-eleven revenue line that comes out of there, not out of the road and bridge sales tax.
It's just out of your-
Operation budget.
Two-eleven is road, it's, uh, road and bridge property tax. It's the CART money we were talking, just talking about. That's the main, two main sources of revenue for two-eleven.
Two-eleven has nothing to do with the road and bridge sales tax.
Correct. Totally separate.
I'm just making sure you both are nodding your head, 'cause if one of you does this, then I, good, one of you's confused, too, or I confuse you, so.
Be like a bobblehead here.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I see what you're doing, just agree with him, we can go on.
Yeah. Okay, what do you, what else?
I gotta read and read.
All right, that's all the notes I had, unless you-
So, so Debbie, um, uh, let's go back to, and Mark, let's go back to five-three-two-four-one, that's insurance.
Yes.
And I know we increased that number, um, from what? Are, are we, I, I know there's some talk about that number actually needing to go up even more, um-
It's changed a little bit yesterday, so I'm not willing to change that yet.
Leave it, leave it where it is.
Leave it where it is, and me and Mark will work out what, what it actually is, and then, um, maybe we'll get with you as far as how many deductibles you think we'll have to put into your line.
Okay.
If that's fair to you guys, 'cause we're still in negotiations.
Is this the hundred eighty-six thousand line here, that we're talking about?
That's everything from his liability to his buildings, to his equipment, to his vehicles. But yes, they will all have to be adjusted across all budgets.
Oh.
So, what else do you?
One other item, and it, this has just, just recently come up, and this is a crossover, it's a, between us and the health department and parks, I guess. So, we installed that sprinkler system, or we assisted in the installation of that out at the health department, and it's on a separate meter, and the conversation was, who pays for that bill? And it, it will be an additional expense going forward. Uh, the parks department does have, um, a line item in there for landscape maintenance. That's-
When you say meter, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
A water meter.
Oh, well, that should be just attached to the health department building itself.
It's a separate meter for the, you know, the, the usage of the water. The sprinkler system will be tracked on a separate meter. So, the question is, there was a question as they were finalizing all that, um-
Sorry, I was emailing Locke, 'cause he was gonna come back at nine-thirty, and we're running long, Christie's here now, so.
At Bill.
Oh.
So.
And CPR is for your staff, that's what they say. CPR, for your staff.
I think anything that has to do with that building, and even if it's a meter on that building, that cost goes to maintenance for the utilities, not you guys.
Facilities maintenance, Greg Kim?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, what are we talking about?
Oh, they said they had to put a new meter on the health department building for the sprinkler system.
Oh.
Yeah, okay. And, and I said, we do have money in there for land, facilities landscaping. It, it's tied to that a little bit, but I just wanna make sure we're clear on where that's gonna go, I don't know what that amount's gonna be, it's not gonna be tremendous, I don't think.
I would not get that complicated with you guys taking care of that, every building, those utilities have to go to the maintenance department.
Okay.
If he doesn't like that, let, let me know.
Like I said, that was just a question that came up here just, just yesterday, actually, so.
Where I grew up, that would be charged at health department.
It, they're all in general fund.
Okay.
Parks is in general fund too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's different.
Yeah, to lessen the amount of line items on general fund budgets.
What's it cost to run our health department? Well, it costs X dollars, uh, but it should be X plus because Greg is, is paying for the sprinkler.
I mean, you can look at the indirect cost study, and that'll tell you.
Well, but indirect is fair.
Yes.
I think.
I mean, it's fine if you wanna do it that way.
No, it's too, it's too.
We had a lot of trouble with bills not getting paid when we have separated all out. We have a lot of them on the P cards now, so, if we can, so, to make sure the utilities get paid.
Anything else in two eleven?
No.
Salaries?
Uh, salaries, um, I can do that now, or if you wanna, let's cover the sales tax, eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven.
And, and under eight oh six, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're good on.
Okay.
Go to eight oh six real quick, uh, that's page one twenty-three. We have in there the PS and E for addition to the shop, at a hundred thousand dollars, we did receive the, the submittals for that, we got six submittals from architect companies. Uh, I plan to review those and bring to you all a recommendation of the first part of next year, just wanna make sure we're still, we're still good with that.
You just gotta go out and find grants?
I know, I know, yeah, we're, we're gonna have to find the money, and that'll.
Yeah.
But until we know what the cost is and what our options are, uh, this is a key, key part of continuing to build out and improve our operation, so. Okay.
Still on the list.
Okay. And then, uh, so the.
Eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven.
Uh, page one twenty-seven, one twenty-eight.
I, I don't really have anything to, to add to what we talked about last week. This is gonna be, uh, a lot of last minute decision-making and changing around because we got so much, uh, in flux right now with, with end of year things. We got a project that bids, I think it's next week, um, one stormwater, now, that's gonna be an ARPA. But it still changes how much money we would've ever didn't put into stormwater for this year, so, a lot of carry forward that's unanswered for Wildwood Drive, that's in this year's budget. So, everything in that carries forward into next year, we're gonna advertise that project on Sunday, but bid it in January. So, we're gonna go into the next budget, not knowing exactly what that price is gonna be.
We, we put a pretty big number on that, though, already, didn't we?
I'm concerned it's gonna be even bigger.
Okay.
So, but we just don't know. So, finalizing everything, like we do every year, uh, the last, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll nail everything down the last week of the month, uh, like we normally do, and we'll know exactly where, where things are carried forward.
POs and update accordingly.
Yeah, we did have an item in, in this current year that, that we did, uh, we did make the payment to the city on Monroe Street.
Oh, yeah, right, so that should come out.
That goes away. Uh, it's, it's a little more than what was budgeted originally.
You say we did make?
We did, uh, it's processed, whether it's actually gone yet or not, but.
It'll be out by the end of the year, that city, where, where is that? Under city, or co-op, or what?
I'm, I'm just gonna make this comment, we, we made the payment.
Mm-hmm.
I drive over Monroe Street, they haven't done anything yet.
It's under contract.
Okay, it's under contract, so why do we make the payment now before they've had to make any payments? And, and I'm, I'm gonna get on my horse here a minute about.
Yeah.
The prison site.
Wait, did they, that one that happened?
Chestnut.
And they, they sat on?
One million five fifty-three back in twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't see where they've spent any of that yet.
And the interest they made on that should've been.
At least the contract's been let and signed.
Yes, um.
This is not even.
I understand totally, yeah, I, I, I'm, I, I understand exactly where, where we're at on this, so, the way the agreements were written in the past and the way MSP, it was kind of like, yeah, we, in last, the last sales tax cycle and the way those projects were, there was an imbalance of the city paid a little more on one, we paid less, and we ended up with one point five five three, that number. Um, that ultimately was gonna go towards MSP. To, to get it done and to get it paid out by the end of that sales tax cycle, the decision was made, let's go ahead and make that payment, because at the time, they were working on the whole conference center and everything. Of course, that happened, and they're sitting on the money. This one, the way we worded this specific agreement now is that when they have a signed contract, or it's an awarded contract, then we make the payment.
So, when, when we start to unveil the expenses and the construction of Wildwood, we'll ask for a check?
When we have, when we award the contract or have the con, yeah, when we award it, then we'll send them an invoice for their share.
Before we start actually paying the bills?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, one difference with that, with the, the current projects we have, the six that we have right now, the cart project, we have not received anything on that from them. Now, um, the original agreements were, when it was completed, you know, so that was, but that was again written early on, uh, and then the current agreement that we're under right now is an addendum to the original. So, we're still waiting on that, and so, the way that's written is, when we know the final cost, then they'll submit, um, whatever the amount that they owe us. So, we're about ready to have that completed, and we can send that, but we won't give that payment till next year.
We need to adopt that then, too, and rather than paying them in advance, we need to pay them when the project's done.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, as we look at the, into the future, there's still needs to clean, we'd still need to clean up that whole, that whole program, so, definitely, yeah. And we're, I, I agree wholeheartedly with what you're coming from.
What we've done jointly with the city on the, uh, High, High Street bi-duct, on the planning side, only on the planning side, there are, these, those expenses are being incurred.
Currently, yes.
And so, and we're kicking in.
It's, it's about five hundred thousand dollars of the total, which is about a million.
And that's fair.
Yes.
Where was that Monroe?
Is that in the cooperative bill?
Uh, it's corporate projects, five four nine oh seven.
No separate, no separate project number assigned to it?
No.
Okay. It's not even in next year's budget, you were planning on pay, you, we've planned to pay it this year, it's not in.
Correct, yes.
There's a million dollars in that line item for next year, five hundred thousand for High Street bi-duct and five hundred thousand for the stadium and Edgewood.
Yes.
Okay.
And those are.
So, we don't need to change anything in next year's budget?
No.
This Monroe?
No.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, I'm just saying it will carry forward Wildwood into this current year, and so it'd be a placeholder in this year's budget, but it'd be a carry forward from twenty twenty-four.
I just wanted to make sure that Monroe Street payment wasn't in next year's budget.
We're done with Monroe, as of this week, probably.
Okay.
We're done. I knew that was gonna, I was like, oh, pitch that one up there.
Jeff, you had to get your, uh, long discussion about the gas tax, there he got his one. Sam's sitting in the middle.
Oh, yeah. Sam.
How you talking about the bi-duct?
Okay, where was I? I know everybody else is sitting down, I don't even, hurry up and finish.
They got all day.
Oh, you do, don't you?
We really do.
We got to three o'clock, is that right?
Okay.
We got a schedule.
So, let, let's talk about salary, and I know other department.
Anything else on eight, I just wanted to make sure, any other questions on eight oh seven?
No projects.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, um, out of everything we've done with, with budgets and, and all that, the one that we focus the most on is salaries, and, um, I think I made a pretty in-depth presentation last week on where we stand, what our needs are, and where we, where we see, or where we, where we're looking at going into the future. And we're a lot lower than where we should be on starting salaries, uh, percentage-wise, I, I didn't, I don't have that exact number, but just to give you a comparison, our street maintenance worker, um, or equipment operator, that's starting right now, as it stands, is thirty-three, four, uh, the city's at thirty-six, one thirty-eight. MODOT is forty thousand nine forty-eight. So, we're, we're pretty low, um, where we think we need to be, and I know there's some, uh, discussion last week, I heard some comments that, um, can't believe it's that low, and those are, you know, borderline poverty wages. The mechanic, we're even farther out of, out of whack there, so our starting right now is thirty-nine, nine, the city, and even what I presented last week is, is outdated, it's over fifty thousand for their starting mechanic position right now. And then MODOT is forty-seven, seven, so, um, that's just, just starting bringing somebody in the door. We also have, we're seeing an issue with retention. So, I said, uh, last week, we got of our thirty-nine, and this is just Roden Bridge, of our thirty-nine employees, thirteen have less than five years' experience. When you have that, you know, inexperienced staff, you're, you're in the process of training them and building them up and, and getting them to, you know, it ties back to, you know, comfort level driving a tandem axle snow plow when you're out plowing snow. Um, you know, getting that experience is pretty important in what our operation, you know, what we have to do and what our responsibility is. Look a little further, since twenty twenty, right at the time I came in as director, and this includes the previous director and everybody, um, we've had twenty, twenty-one employees that came in or now gone. So, of our current, and this is just on, it's everybody, it's, that's the Roden Bridge, actually, just there, you know, twenty-one of our thirty-nine, uh, back then are gone. So, we're, we're seeing a lot of turnover, and it's a number of different reasons, a lot of retirements, you know, you know, that's, that's part of it. But the retirement, when you lose somebody with that experience, it's hard to replace that, and so you're, at the end of the day, ultimately, it trickles on down toward your higher entry level, entry level position. Uh, bringing somebody in that could be straight out of high school, or maybe coming into a new career that just has very little experience. Uh, we train them, we get them to get their CDL, uh, we actually did the, had them sign a, sign a contract, because now it cost us to train somebody to get their CDL. And we've had two people leave and actually pay that contract back, just to go to a lot higher paying jobs, doing some very similar thing that, that what they were doing before. So, uh, we're seeing that, and here's the problem, is that as time goes on, and if we keep on cycling out these five-year or less employees, you know, people like me, you know, ten years from now, you know, I'll be looking at retirement, but we have a lot of people that are older than me, and they're even closer to that, and so it's important that we bring people in, train them, but it's even more important that we keep them and retain them, so, um, you know, that, that's the issues we're facing. So, the proposal that I made is, in, in addition to what the auditor had proposed with the two point two COLA and the five hundred, uh, per employee, is back in, uh, that difference, if it was a snapshot in time back in August, was about a hundred thousand dollars. As it stands now, just with some people leaving since then, it's about eighty-one. And I sent this out, I don't know if you got this last, last week when I sent it out. Now, these numbers, uh, I think are still fluid because we're still in.
Did you just email this, 'cause I was printing these?
That was last week I emailed it to you, along with the salary, uh, schedule that I had sent in, so, um, where, where do, where do I see this going forward? Well, you know, the, uh, we had the minimum wage, that increased, uh, now whether that stands or not, we don't know, I think there's a lawsuit potentially, uh, out against that, but the voters approve that. Across the country, this is very similar across the country, um, I, uh, by coincidence, not on purpose, but I'm a member of the American Public Works Association, I'm also the delegate for our Missouri chapter, one of sixty-three delegates across the country and, and Canada. And our strategic goals in APWA, one of them, and actually the primary one is workforce development, so, it's one thing to bring people in the door, but you gotta develop them, and you gotta keep them. And if we keep on losing people to higher paying jobs, and those jobs are out there, uh, we just saw that happen last week or the week before, uh, somebody going to, uh, a different opportunity, making about thirty-five percent more. We're gonna get to a situation where we're, we're losing that experience, and that experience comes in hand primarily when we get into these, uh, serious situations like snow removal and other emergency operations where we, where we assess the other, you know, EMS and the sheriff's department, and then just the general public. Um, one, one concern I got, and I think it's gonna continue to get worse, as, uh, MODOT in the state starts to build out I seventy, there's a huge demand for, uh, that equipment operator, that maintenance worker, and in that field. There's also a huge demand for engineers and consultants, um, you know, and even my proposal doesn't include myself, but I can tell you that that demand's out there greater than I've ever seen it, so, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna see, it, just across the whole industry, across what we do, uh, we're starting to see these issues, so, um, what, what I wanna do is raise our starting salary up to thirty-eight thousand for the equipment operator, that's the entry level, gets them in the door. I think that's comparable, maybe, uh, you know, comparable, maybe lower than what even some of the minimums of other departments are. I think it's fair in comparison to the city and the state. The mechanic position, um, that one, we need to bring up to.
You said forty-eight?
Forty-eight thousand, yeah. Still just a tad low than the city, and, and it's maybe just a tad higher than, than the state, but it's very comparable. Um, and, you know, for example, we just, we just hired a new mechanic out of State Tech within the, about a year and a half ago. I, I know that, you know, going forward, we're not gonna be able to bring somebody in with what we're paying them right now, so, you know, it's important that we keep somebody like that, it's important that we keep everybody that we have, continue to build them to where when we start cycling through, you know, these retirements that we got impending over the next five to, to ten years, that we have those people to fill those positions. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're seeing it right now, even with, as Kevin retired, uh, and transitioning to Aaron Locke as road superintendent. You know, bringing people up, you know, ultimately, that's, could end up in somebody as a new crew supervisor. Those types of positions, you know, we need to have people that continue to be able to fill as people move on. I don't think my ask is, is tremendous, and actually, you know, if I could, I'd, I'd ask for more, but I think it's fair. I think at the end of the day, maybe the right way to do this is to put this into a, you know, a reserve, or however you wanna, you know, I, I don't know how you, how you end up doing it, every.
Did you miss yesterday's meeting? It's the C R A M, or what was the acronym?
So, what's that?
It was a separate pool, that's a special name that we were talking about.
It's C R A.
Yeah.
How close C R A?
Call it anything you want.
You know, like I said. You know, I seventy, that's just, uh, that's one thing, I know I forty-four's next, so we're gonna see this over the next ten years, uh, there's gonna be a huge drain for our type of employee. The one thing we got going for us right now is, you know, we're very, fairly flexible with people, um, a lot of people do things on the side to supplement their income, um, a lot of people farm on the side, so we, we can, you know, we're pretty flexible and work around their schedules, um, reasonable benefits, but, but I, I will tell you that, you know, those on the private side and everywhere else, those are starting to get closer to what we got right now, so uh, this is, I, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm telling you this because I'm extremely concerned that if we don't invest in, and this, this is just strictly salary, if we don't continue to invest in our type of, uh, employee in public works, we're gonna start seeing situations where, you know, that the experience is starting to go down, and that impacts the ability to operate the equipment that we have, it's, you know, could result, you know, you got, for example, we had accidents last year, I know three we had during snow, and the three that we had were more inexperienced drivers, it just happens, it's gonna happen, but those are the kinda issues that we're, we're seeing long-term, so, um, in, in comparison to our whole overall budget, it's a very small amount. So, in comparison to our whole overall budget, it's a very small amount. It should, you know, I think, you know, a small amount, although it's a big impact to the people that we have, and I think it'd make a big difference. And, you know, unfortunately, I think this is gonna be something that we're just gonna keep facing. I don't think it's gonna go away. We do our best. I heard a comment made a couple of years ago, I was talking to the APWA national president at the time, and talking about this, two years ago, we were, I said, "Yeah, the biggest issue I face is salaries." I'll be flat out. We can build roads, we can design this and that all day long. That's, you know, we can do our daily operations, and I think we do a very good job at it. That's the easy part, it's keeping our employees where we need to have them on salaries is challenging. And he said, "Yeah, public works tends to fix things and put things together with baling wire. We make things work on the outside, it looks like everything's great, and on the inside, you know, we're doing this here, doing that there, filling in where we have to." For example, one of our employees who previously had worked for a roofing company repaired the salt bill, redid the shingles. We didn't have to hire that out. How much did that save? Couple thousand at least. Just cost us the rental of a lift to get up there to do it. So, we make things, we make things work, we assist everybody else. I could go on and on about this, but it's extremely important to me that we take care of it.
I agree. I'd say, I don't know how you find anybody, just kinda come and work on the thirty-three thousand.
So, to get more into how we projected this out, so we took, we basically took the starting and up them to that. And so, that does have a little bit of an effect going on. Now, we didn't give them the same amount going forward, you know, we tried to say, okay, so if your COLA's gonna be this, we'll take a work group and we'll say, we'll increase that work group this amount. It's not, everybody gets the same amount. Now, I think there's still some room to figure out exactly what that looks like. I'm not included in that, Matt and I are not included. Yeah, that's a separate conversation, not even part of this today, so, but... Any thoughts? I know I sent you all the spreadsheet, Harry, you asked for it last meeting, did you have a chance to look through any of that?
I have had some time because I think your ask is reasonable. Has it changed from last week?
It actually...
Went down from the original.
It went down, the original, just because we've had people retire and leave, and so ultimately, what that does to us as a snapshot in time, it's less. I think ultimately, going into next year, it's gonna be even a little more less, because as people cycle through, we'll be hiring entry-level positions or A-position. So, it's probably gonna go down a little bit. But I think there's still some room to tweak exactly what we did back in August.
We're looking at like two-eleven.
Yes, now, yeah, the other ones, there might be similar. But again, I took, you know, what, the salary comparisons I did, I basically took whatever your job title was, I compared it to across the board. So, not everybody's getting, you know, I'm not saying everybody gets the same amount.
So, I mean, a week ago, two-eleven, the difference between you and Mark was a hundred and one.
Yes.
And today, the difference is eighty-two?
Yes.
Not a week ago, three months ago.
August, yeah.
September one.
Yeah.
Or no, by November, I guess November fifteenth. Well, his ask, their asks have to come in by September first. I print out my recommended budget on November fifteenth, so, anyway.
Basically, that just shows two people...
It didn't change in a week. You came with these same numbers a week ago.
Yeah, yeah, right.
He came, yeah.
And a little bit of this discussion is, you know, we've talked about adding back the second assistant road superintendent, and I do recommend that. I think everybody's okay with that, but I don't think you'll see a big change in this number, just because, you know, if like a crew supervisor makes the jump up to that, we're still, at the end of the day, placing with an entry-level position. So, the difference actually offsets more than what the, the lesser amount with that offsets the increase, so...
Can I just ask? I put lock off for half hour. If I email, Christie's waiting, Bill's waiting, how long are we going with this? Should I put off lock for another half hour? Okay.
I do appreciate a lot of people though that have retired. We had a lot of people that were here for a long time, and so, we're having turnover with that, because they're coming in, and right now, it's an employees market. You can go road and bridge for a little while, get some great benefits, and if you don't thank the money, especially these young ones, they chase the money. You can go do construction somewhere and make more money tomorrow, easy. And so, I don't know if just throwing money at it, because I think our benefits package is very good, so do we back off on the benefits package and pay more money upfront, or is there a way to give them an option? If they want the money upfront rather than the package, is there a way to do that? I know we've had a lot of people retire, you're bringing in new people, and then you lose them, because they're not really vested in our public works, but once they get in there for a while, they don't leave.
Right.
We've lost...
And we lost an engineering technician, been here eleven years. You know, that, you'll get a little bit of that. We lost a crew supervisor that had been here about sixteen or seventeen, a couple of years ago. There's always those opportunities out there, people will pursue that. Once you get vested in your retirement, you got enough built up, you get to the point, do you stay, or should I stay, or should I go now? And, you know, you know, somebody that's been here twenty, twenty-five years, but we do have a pending resignation of an employee that had been here twenty-seven, had been here twenty-seven or twenty-six, pursuing something different.
When did we start the career path? Is that two years ago?
Yeah, two years ago.
Because we made some pretty significant jumps there.
If your ask today for two-eleven is this eighty-one, eight-nine, I'm gonna say yes.
Go on, Jim.
I'm gonna reserve judgment for now, still looking over here. So, all the numbers in the pink are what you're asking for the adjustments, right?
Can you see that okay? That might be a little...
Not from here. Got it right here.
This one's a little bigger.
Yes, because that bottom line is a hundred and forty-five thousand, or a hundred and fourteen, I'm sorry.
You got, look at this sheet here.
Is that your, that's your final ask?
This is, this is the summary of everything. Okay, let me, let me back up just a tad, and I know there was conversation yesterday about the cell phone stipend. So, our ask was taking that out completely.
It sounds like everybody wants that still in. I'm sorry, misunderstood you. I thought that was, I thought you told me months ago, that'd be easier to take the cell phone stipend out, so...
But if they weren't pulling down the salary, I mean...
It's sixty-eight hundred dollars as it sits right now for us, so...
But you've got that figured back into their salary, basically. And they were talking about taking away the stipend and not giving the salary, so...
We were just taking away the stipend, and it's kind of rolled into everything else we're doing. Is the county thinking of just taking away the stipend, but we're just leaving it as it?
Let's not start this again.
Wait a second. Yeah, no, it's...
Stipends stay in.
Okay. So then, add sixty-eight hundred dollars to whatever I proposed.
Subtract it out of eighty-two.
So, the sheet that I was looking at was August, and then you've got your revised...
It's not figured into the eighty-one.
Total for eighty-one.
It was just taken out completely. If I throw it back in, then it... Because not everybody, not everybody gets the stipend.
But I mean, there's no reason why you couldn't just say, "We're not doing the stipend for your department."
Sure.
If you want to do that.
Well, it's true, yeah.
Do these, do these adjustments, and then we forego the cell phone stipend.
Just don't buy them no phones from the county.
We don't buy phones, that's all, just, yeah.
It is a change, honey.
Got two, move on.
Yep.
I didn't say no, I didn't say yes, I'm just still looking.
The only thing I'll clarify, you know, you're gonna have lots to ask. You had lots to ask on salaries yesterday, you've got lots to ask coming up for salary. When he first started, he had no problem with maybe putting that eighty-two thousand into your ACRM account, and making sure we're all square before, because already what's in there is the two-point-two and the five-hundred, and the career plan is already in there. So, there's eighty-two, setting that aside, within public works, EMS, they have a rate scale, right, that they come up with, the sheriff has their own rate scale. And then, if you would, put an account in GR under the ACRA at a hundred and fifty thousand, earmark then for those jobs that come back through HR and get reevaluated. You're gonna hear from the prosecutor today, I'm sure you're gonna hear from the health department today, and the ones that you heard from yesterday. I don't think you wanna sit here and pick and choose winners and losers, I think that all needs to go through HR. So, consider that. Consider that in that yes, and then having that looked at again.
So, can we take the salaries with the step and with the COLA and everything, see how close we come to your proposed salary they're gonna make, and maybe adjust it down that way, so that by the time they get their step pay and they get their COLA, they're at this price?
He's saying that it would be the other eighty-two thousand to get them to that price. So, yes, he is saying that, but instead of just doing it right now, I just think we put that in there, it could happen before the first, and the raise takes effect on the third check in January this year. So, it could still all happen by then, but for budget purposes, it's up to you guys.
I guess I would renege just a little bit and say, unless we can't, at the end of the day, we can afford it.
Right.
If we can, I'm gonna give you a pretty good tentative, yes.
And that would be great, because especially we don't know carry-forwards and everything, and we wanna make sure our...
I think we need to treat it the same as we're doing for the electric officials too. We can't tell our own department that, "Yeah, we're gonna do it for ourselves, but we're not gonna do it for auditor." Hey, too bad, we're gonna have to look at it at the end, so...
Right.
I would agree, but I think we've got some other starting salaries that need to be adjusted as well, too.
Yeah, I think...
So, what you're saying is, this eighty-two number...
Yes.
It's kind of a placeholder right now. We'll cycle through, and then, I mean, again, I...
After the budget's approved, then we'll...
Then we'll have this...
What's the official date? January ninth?
Seven.
You'll know for sure, January seventh. I mean, you got a pretty good idea right now.
Yeah.
I just wouldn't go tell anybody that yet.
It's on TV right now, though.
Well, they heard me.
Gotcha.
Anything else?
I appreciate it.
No problem.
No, it all, long conversation. Well, say, Bill, before, yeah, before Eric leaves.
We did Bill yesterday.
Yeah, that's why Bill's here. Yeah, this is not Bill's, but, so, part of the safety committee, I'm trying to help
the law with, because he's taken over for Nick. And part of the safety committee, we talked about the new AEDs, that's part of it. Well, then, when we put them in, people gotta know how to use them. So, we talked about CPR classes that cover AED usage for those staff that are not EMS and not law enforcement, and we actually already gave the class to Pringer Center. So, the health department has two people that are trained to do CPR classes, I think we can do eight per trainer, no, six per trainer. So, and then EMS said if we had a bigger class, like if public works wanted to do all their staff together, EMS said they would help, they also have mannequins, we could do that together. The cost is still eighty dollars a staff person, because we have to pay for the materials, we have to pay for their card, their certification, you know, but we can come in and teach it. So, we were wondering if the commission would support that. I think Bill also wants to talk about those AED cabinets, but we feel like it's very important, if you're gonna put the AEDs in the buildings, people need to know how to use them. You don't want the first time they're getting it out, follow the directions, when somebody is in dire need. So, I, like I said, Nick was gonna send that to you guys to get on the commission agenda. I don't know if he sent it to you, I wasn't copied on it, but we're just kind of trying to pick up some of those pieces, and I thought budget time was a good time to talk about those classes. And I do not know the number of staff that need it, that's one thing. So, and maybe we don't make any decisions today, I just wanted to kind of bring that up, that we're getting the AEDs, we're gonna need cabinets to put them in, and then people gotta know how to use them.
Is it fair to say that, at the end of the day, for every fully educated user, it costs us eighty bucks out of pocket?
Yeah, right.
That's a, that's a bargain to say.
Right.
So, the cabinets, as you know, we have one down the hallway, and they're marked so people can see them. I didn't know nothing about this till the other day after Nick left, we get a truck full of AEDs in, so that's the first I knew about. So, I kind of reached out to Christie and him, because I didn't know what was going on, had no clue.
And that should have included cabinets as well.
I don't think it did. Yeah, we were talking about, we thought it, right, so just to help, so maybe we can get back together and talk about the AEDs and the cabinets, but please know that we need to train people.
And EMS...
We have fourteen of them on a pallet right now.
EMS, set up one day in front of the courthouse, and today, kind of a lifesaving event, so we could probably get EMS.
Anyway, so, just kind of keep that in mind, that let it, maybe you want us to get some numbers together, you know?
You recommend everybody in our staff?
I would say so, because, I mean, especially if they're out, you know, in the field, one of their coworkers, you know, they might have to do CPR on them, you probably don't have an AED accessible, but that's why the CPR part. And we can do them two ways, like the CPR, we can do a full day where we go through everything together, or they have the option to do the videos beforehand, and then we come in for four hours and do the skills. And, I mean, that's up to the supervisors, if they wanna dedicate a whole day, or if they want people to watch the videos on their own, you have to, you know, do the little quiz or whatever, and then you come in and just do the skills part.
And the eighty-two dollars, that's for your staff.
Eighty, yeah. So, like I said, we have to pay for the materials, we have to pay for the books, they get their certification card, it costs us, we're basically, you know, that's our cost to do the class.
We can actually take that out of the wellness program within the health insurance, if you guys like.
So, it's not just, say, the line of accounting, or...
No, no, it's, yeah.
You know, the first time we did this, kind of a history, is years ago, when we put them, we put them, one here, one down the courthouse, one at Pringer and one at Public Works, that's all we did. And one year, someone was paying their taxes, now Larry Vincent had a heart attack, and they came up and got the pads and used them, with ambulance got it, so, worked.
It's a good thing, and you just check with, because they did approve the AEDs and the cabinets, so we'll make that right, and then you're gonna bill us for whatever.
We can do that, yeah.
And set that all up, if you guys...
The classes to...
No, what did we approve before? Because we have some new...
The AEDs and the cabinets, you had already...
These were years ago, yeah.
Yeah, no, but just recently, these fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen there. They were a hundred and thirty-five and fifteen cents, what he sent.
Right, we didn't need fourteen new cabinets, but...
Right.
We just needed the new cabinets for the new placements of the AED machines. And I don't know where, as I say, and I don't know where those were going, some of them were going to the courthouse. Tracy was gonna look...
Tracy should have that list.
Yeah, so Tracy was gonna go look through that for that list.
Do you produce a schedule, or not a schedule, but a list of where these fourteen units are?
As soon as we find the information.
How many do you have right now, Bill? Are fourteen over there?
We have fourteen new ones, yes.
But then, like, I don't know if that, we have three old ones, and I don't know if that fourteen included replacing our three old ones or not. So, we're trying...
Yes, we were trying to get rid of all of them.
That's what we were trying to figure out.
To make them all the same.
Make them all the same, same.
And I don't remember what we did with the cabinets, I thought we had approved, ordered like five more cabinets.
Right, six, yeah.
We were adding something.
It wasn't fourteen.
So, should be two at Public Works, three at Pringer, three at Anex, two at Carnegie, and four at courthouse.
Well, we couldn't, did not have that piece of paper that you're waiting for.
I'll forward the email to you, I've just gone off of that.
Yeah, because Bill was trying to find that, Tracy was trying to find it, Chris, we were all trying to figure out exactly.
Yeah, we should be able to find some minutes from the meeting or something.
Right, okay, good, good.
I'll send this to you.
Okay, and then Jen and Dana had already identified some dates, so we'll kind of circle back on those dates and see how, you know, if you want your staff to watch the videos, and we just come and do that four-hour skills portion, and then we'll have to sort of survey other staff. Like I said, we just had to do Pringer Center, because they need it for their license, their research.
Which is worse than AED or Taser?
The what?
Which is worse than AED or Taser?
Taser.
Taser for liability.
Taser has NMI neuromuscular infestation that's specifically designed...
With the dates? With the dates, I did, I did, but if you can't find it, let me know because I just sent it back to Bill. I'm trying to circle back.
We want to do this where our people do it earlier, like winter times.
Right.
Okay, look at those dates and you're going to buy back to Jen and Dana. Okay, so that's why Bill was here because we wanted to circle back on some of those state committee.
I didn't know what was going on.
Yeah.
I was just teasing about we went through your budget yesterday. I mean, we actually did, but you didn't change anything, so. And Debbie reminded me, we approved that purchase of marijuana. Do we want to change that?
I've already paid for part of it, I'm pretty sure. I paid for the bill, but can't.
For what? Paid for what?
Paid for that marijuana tax. I think Harry's right. He's going to build it.
Oh, I didn't get an email from a guy showing two hundred and seven dollars a piece for a cabinet and I go on Amazon and get it for eighty-nine bucks.
We can't buy from Amazon right now.
But you can't buy it.
Now, Bill, don't start.
We have to, Christine.
Please.
Yes.
Okay.
Have a seat.
Okay. The other, Eric was talking about, you know, people leave for a variety of reasons. And I know it would be some work, but I think it'd be sort of interesting to do a staff survey. You know, last year I did stay interviews with my staff. You know, I said I exited interviews. I did stay interviews and sat down with each one of them one-on-one and talked about things. You know, what do you like about your job? What could be changed? You know, just things like that. Why would, what would, you know, entice you to leave, you know, and maybe that could get to the root of why people are leaving after, you know, eight, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Anyway, I know it's not just money. Okay, some of mine, and some of it can't be changed, like the temperature of the building. It is what it is. You can mess with it a little bit, but sometimes, you know, it is. Okay, so for my budget, most of the grants are stable. We might want to have a closed session at some time to talk about the ELC contract and the negotiations that are going on there. But my big ask, as with everyone else, is salary. As you know.
Last week, we did, you did nothing else.
Nothing else, no.
What page were we on here? Everything on my budget was okay.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't have any.
Okay, with other salaries, okay.
Fifty-eight.
Yeah, sorry, fifty-eight.
Yeah, the only difference that I had from the auditor's proposed budgetless salaries and, you know, I printed my email.
I didn't need to update the WIC Medicaid to actual, but whatever.
Okay.
That won't change much.
Yeah, that won't change. Back in, I guess it started April or May, and in June, I had sent my informal salary studies on the nurses' salaries to Sheila. She kind of confirmed with her study and found that the average, I mean, that was in June of 2024, the average nurse's salary is sixty-seven. So I didn't bring my chart that I sent, but, yeah, our, our starting salary for nurses is fifty-two, five, and our nurse three, so we have two positions that we count as public health nurse twos. One does MCH, CCH, that sort of stuff, one does STDs. And then we have two nurses that are, we count as threes because they have more complicated programs. It's the EMS program and communal disease and epidemiology. They start at fifty-six, five. Then we have a nurse supervisor and a clinic manager.
Is that what you're looking for? That is the whole packet, the last one you gave me.
Yeah, so our average, our, our starting near salary is, you know, fifteen thousand below the average salary in Missouri. And I'm not saying we should be at the average, but I think we need to be closer. So in my ask, I added seven thousand dollars to each nurse's salary to try to get them closer to the average or at the average.
Is this close to the second thing we talked about?
It is the, yes, it was June, yes. And you said wait till budget time.
And that's all, I'm pulling up your salary schedule, ask again. That's all you're asking for, right?
Correct. I had put in three, I had put in three percent because that's what we thought.
Five hundred plus two point two is, it equates to total of three. It just gives the lower paid employees a little more than.
Right, right. So, yeah, that is the only thing that is different is for those nurses, so there's six of them. It's, right?
Forty-two, yeah.
Yeah, it's forty-two thousand dollars difference.
And we keep our nurses.
Right.
And they are in such great demand. It's kind of like paramedic.
Right. And we require RNs. I know some people are like, well, why can't you hire LPNs? Because you can get them cheaper. The reason that the health department historically always had RNs and not LPNs is the LPNs were kept under an RN's license. We don't have a med, or a medical director. We don't have a medical director on site. And I guess, you know, way back when it was decided that it wasn't fair for the RNs to have to sign off on the LPNs work. You're putting your license on the line for this other staff member, so we just hired all RNs, so.
How many RNs do you have?
Six.
Six.
Because Jen and Chesney work in the clinic, there are RNs as well.
So, okay, so just from view of fifty thousand B. You asked, when you sent it to Mark, you asked for two million, open five, I thought.
Mm-hmm.
And Mark said one nine six six four seven seven, which is fifty-nine one eighteen.
But.
And the reason, the difference fifty-nine one eighteen, that's six nurses at seven thousand.
But that's only forty-two, right?
They're getting your benefits.
Oh, correct.
So it's forty-two salary plus the benefits gets you to.
Fifty-one nine, or fifty-one, nine.
Yeah, that makes it best, seventeen, and that's, it's kind of in the thirty-one, thirty-three.
Oh, you're, those numbers come from total budget. I said, where are you getting those numbers?
Yeah, he's looking at total budget.
Four, one point four.
She could have had some changes in personnel.
Yeah.
Compared to what the money.
Oh, there, gotcha, okay. Total personnel, okay, sorry.
And since August, we might have a little, you know, a few little changes. Yeah, Emily resigned. We have a new one starting on the twenty-third and then Chelsea, yeah. Yeah, we're bringing her in at the same rate, the starting salary.
So I think what they've been telling most everybody else is probably put this in a reserve.
Unless they want to pick and choose which ones they want to do, you know, but right now for budget purposes, since we're going to approve it, it'd be easier just to put it in that reserve, make sure we got all the documentation she needs. And then you can implement it and we can surely get it done by the, that first, that third check in Jan, in January, I'm saying July. Yes, that's when it would be effective because that would. Yeah, this year we do.
Because our first one's on the second.
So, yeah, we're actually paying before we have them, but we won't go there. It happens. I don't like it this close myself.
Can't change the calendar.
Right.
Every two weeks, yes.
So, did you have any questions about it or?
Kind of treating everybody right now, but.
Yeah, I'm still fishing in the same boat.
I'm still fishing in my boat.
Same lake? Or would you have the ducks at least all in the same ball?
I think it's in different oceans right now.
I have sailboat for eight years. I'm sailing in my boat.
Okay.
At least in the same ball, I mean, well.
Thank you, Sheila. I had brought, printed some of it. That's all I had.
You didn't have any questions on anything else?
On any other line items?
Any other line items, anything in health? Okay, thank you. Take a quick break.
When is Locke coming down?
Well, he didn't respond. He's not here. Oh, maybe he did respond, but he didn't know. I asked ten-thirty, no. He's not here yet, so.
Okay, what do you want to? I would assume the collector is here to tell us how much he loves us.
Oh, after this part.
Did you want to say it or?
Yes, please.
We're taking a little break.
Do you want to take a break? I'm going to take a four, a second, five minute break.
Okay.
And then we'll, and we'll play with you.
Play nice.
So you say, and that's fine?
Will you come in Friday night?
I don't know, but.
That's fine, I just.
We're still on, so sit there and yell at my microphone. God, they're sitting in those chairs.
I know, you need to get up for a while, I love it. Sitting's new.
I don't know, Linda is not, yeah, she's got to do, this is a week today. So we go, the twentieth, we go for two weeks. So anyway, so probably not. We, you know, we need to have a, we need to have a party. There's so many, and then the last Sunday of the program, Jefferson, Sunday afternoon. Saturday, we go to the house. This week, Saturday, I go, I go, and I go to the wreath for heroes on the street. And then Sunday, Linda's from the street, so we, and I, we spend, we get out of there, three. Toys and bears and trains.
LP, how are you? Living the dream, baby, living.
Bill Grant's calling this morning a couple times.
Do what? I'm sorry.
Bill Grant's calling this morning a couple times and saying, hey.
Keeping you busy?
Well, I was, I don't know what Tauss's tax rate is.
Tauss don't have property tax either, do they? They do have one? Because Wardsville does not.
No, but I'm assuming that's where it's fishing from.
Yeah. We got a few businesses out there now that would help them.
You guys are busy Friday night, right? You're not coming?
I don't know yet.
Okay, well, that's all right. We're just, we always have plenty.
Busy, but I assume they'll be, turnover will come, like, coming soon.
Turnover.
I guess it's on the town. It's the eleven.
We don't, we don't even have November.
Okay, all right.
We're having.
Okay.
You've got this stuff screwed up before.
Okay, okay.
We have to do distribution on our, I hope that's due Thursday this morning.
Is that, is that November? Friday, okay.
Cover, I turned a little heater on, turned a needle, hoodie on, looking slipper mode.
Go talk to people that have had Sheila, Sheila, she would kind of talk to you too, become a doctor. So go get it. And I said, well, I'm not going to lose weight or cut down on drinking, so I'll go get the shit. That way at least I can say I did something.
Linda had it in her face and they worried it goes to her eyes.
And Sheila had it in her eyes?
Yeah, she did.
She, yeah, and she goes, oh.
All right, see ya.
Oh. How?
Yeah, we already, we just paid for those AED machines.
I was ready to stretch too.
Check isn't clear, but we paid for it.
You squeezing me in next?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Locke must have got my message in because I asked him to wait till ten-thirty. He didn't respond to my email, but he.
Twelve minutes.
We'd take a lot less time than that if you just say yes.
We're going to put it in the pool. Put it in the pot. And then everybody can draw, whatever name we draw.
Yeah. I emailed Larry this morning just because we, I know you said something about possibly doing, we do an MOU, but. And then we went over your budget yesterday without you, so just wanted to make sure. Well, well, now we can go over it again with you, so. We knew you were busy, though.
We are. I need to buy you some checks too.
Collector's budget is twenty-four, page twenty-four. And that, that's really the only thing. We did up the, we decided just up the postage and not the printing and binding. That would be.
Yes, I think that's our.
Postage thirty thousand, printing and binding stayed at thirty-four, okay. So we made those changes.
Are we starting or are we waiting for them to get back?
I mean, I don't know if we had any changes besides your salary change.
Yeah, it was just salary.
I really wanted to address the salary thing, especially because I read the newspaper this morning and I found it very disturbing to say that I was requesting two thousand dollar bonuses for my employees. That certainly was not my request. I'm asking for raises, which again, I've asked for the last couple of years and virtually got little or nothing. I think my employees have certainly earned it. I've never been one to come before the commission and ask for money that I didn't think was necessary for the operation of my office. And, and I don't recall that I ever regularly came and asked for salary increases. I've always been pretty much felt that all employees should be treated fairly and, and the COLAs the last few years have been pretty sufficient. But just like every other department that comes in front of you and, you know, when you hear that the health department's asking for seven thousand dollar raises for each RN, and I realize that's a specialized position, but I, but what the work my employees do is, is pretty specific also. It's not just a clerical position where you can walk up behind the counter and, and process the payments and all the other works that goes with bankruptcies and escrow companies and everything else. Tax sale, I'm, I'm just advocating for that increase in their salary, certainly not bonuses. And again, I bring in a million, the tax, just the commission, the collector's commission brings in a million dollars a year. Again, that was originally intended for the operation of the collector's office when it was changed in the statutes where the collector used to collect the commission, paid all his staff and employees and expenses out of that commission he received. Whenever that was changed, that salaries were given to the collector and then a budget was created for the collector, the collector that the county paid because they were getting that commission. It was still intended to cover expenses of the collector's office. So we're budgeting approximately half of what I bring in and just in collector's commission, not counting other fees and, and the county taxes we collect and all that other funds for the operation of the county. I know that at one time we had MOUs. I had an MOU with the commission. We did away with that several years back when, when you all tried to do away with all of them. As I understand, you have some in place again now, and I'm more than willing to do an MOU to cover that expense. And if I, if it's not spent that way, I'm, you know, after I pay for the upgrades that are being made in the collector's office this year, my tax maintenance fund will have overage that'll go to the commission every year that will more than cover that expense. So that's, I guess I'm just trying to plead my case that I think my employees have earned it and I, and I think that there's more than enough money generated out of the tax maintenance fund and the commissions, collector's commissions to, to cover relatively small increase in, in my overall budget.
To clarify, the collector's request for full-time, it was three percent COLA and an additional two percent for your three full-time employees. There was never a two, I don't see it, that's what I got here. I didn't see a two thousand.
Maybe I didn't copy you, maybe I didn't copy you on the email.
Okay.
I was going for the COLA plus the two thousand.
Oh.
And he wasn't on it.
He wasn't on it.
Okay, because this is what I got put in, in your budget request. The department requested amount included three, what I got from you originally was three percent COLA and two percent adjustment. So that's what's in the department request. Mine is just the COLA five hundred plus, or two point two plus five hundred.
I apologize for not including you there. I don't know why I would have bluffed you out, but he doesn't get to vote anyway.
Yeah. These numbers are in the budget already. That's what was going to stay, yeah.
So in your, in your budget, you got the, your two twenty-three, nine sixty-eight?
That's just COLA. That's just COLA. That's just the five hundred, or two point two percent plus five hundred. That's all I put in the budget, in most of the budget.
Larry's asking a two point two plus twenty-five.
Plus two.
Well, we have two point.
Twenty-five, you're doing two point two five.
I'm calling the COLA that we have and add two thousand to it, right? Okay, make sure we're both on the, not the two point two plus just two thousand.
So your request is the COLA plus two thousand per.
Yes.
Your, for your other three, for your three full-time, okay.
Yes, sir.
So I think because of the mismatch of your COLA versus your COLA, the difference between the two guys is not, it's not three thousand, it's point six hundred ninety-seven dollars.
It'd be more than that.
Well, you're now.
Yeah, he's asking for two thousand per employee, mine, what I put in was two percent, what I thought I, pretty sure I got from you originally was two percent, yeah, so twenty-eight hundred total, uh, it's so, three thousand per employee, it'd be six thousand total.
Well, so the, the number that shows up on your department request that is different.
Different than that.
Is two twenty-six.
He's changed it since August, he's changed it since August.
Yeah, these come to me in like August by, the, the, the department requests get, have to get to me by September first.
Okay, so what's, what's the new number for the request? A hard dollar.
You could plug in two thousand on each one.
Two thirty-two five sixty-five, if you're adding it.
Two thirty-two?
Yeah, two thirty-two five sixty-five, if you take his August ask and then add the six thousand, two thousand each for three.
Well, what was in the August ask?
The August ask was.
Two twenty-six five.
No, it was two percent.
No, I'm talking about percentage.
Five percent total, basically. Oh, here.
Yeah, just plug two in each one.
Yeah. The ask is now just a little bit under two hundred and thirty thousand.
And what was my original ask?
Original ask was two twenty-six.
So it's about four thousand.
Four thousand.
Looks like two twenty-nine, seven seventy-one, forty. Two two-nine, seven seven-one and forty cents. That's without benefits, are you on benefits?
No, I just want it at the top.
Okay, that's the right one, right, Mark?
Yeah.
That's the new ask.
It's two two-nine?
Two two-nine, seven seven, two, yeah.
And the old one was the two two-six, five six five, right?
Do you want to reiterate kind of what we're doing?
Well, we were talking about, um, having a CRM COOL, an adjustment COOL set aside in GR, uh, anywhere from a hundred and fifty to whatever it would take for some of these ask and then, um, going back through HR to verify the market for those positions and, um, how that affects other departments in the county too, so.
In other words, I'm asking for fairness for mine, I didn't ask for anything but three percent, two, well, the COLA, so. But I think if they go back and, and approve increases for similar type offices, collector, recorder, county clerk, commission, I hope they would treat me the same, yeah.
I agree with that.
I would ask the county to look at all, all those departments at the same time, so, that's my request.
I don't know, I guess from, I don't, at least right now, right now, I don't know where my department stands compared to yours, are the recorders, are the clerks, are treasurer, or, or any of the other ones, so, you know.
They're all over the place, we've had some ask for ten percent, some ask for dollar numbers like you did and, so, that's gonna be the fun part two, I think we're just throwing it in there and I, I think that's just gonna be a discussion amongst itself, is the kind of way I'm seeing it, I think that's kind of the intent of it, so.
And some of them have gotten out of whack because under an elected official, as you know, the budget is yours, right? So then if they, somebody leaves with tenure and spreading that money out, it really, it really does no service.
It screws the rest of the employees.
Yes, it definitely a disservice and a heartening one too.
So we've had, we've eliminated a position down in your office, some of that went to increasing their pay, other offices have vacant positions and use that money and then.
That was over ten years ago though.
I wasn't saying it in a bad way, I meant that.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, it's, you know.
You've survived with it that way, so, I'm not saying that really affects today's ask.
I don't think I've pushed the way other, some other elected officials have in the past, so, uh, I've certainly not taken advantage of the situation when I had money left in my payroll account to increase salaries that then you would have had to bump it up the next year anyway because of spending excess funds like some elected officials have, you know. I've always tried to, I'm very cognizant of the fact that county employees should be treated fairly and they should be traded, treated on a similar type basis as Mark and Debbie are alluding to. But I, I still think my employees, uh, put in the extra effort for the county and, and are deserving, and I wouldn't be here if I didn't feel that. And you've never seen me make this plea before, so, till this year, so. Shouldn't say plea, request. Thank you, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elvie.
Actually, I have to do a bigger part.
Yeah.
I didn't, no, I didn't.
Okay.
Did he come that day?
Second day of last week, yeah, I think, oh yeah, yeah, everybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Seventy-eight is his budget start with revenue, but I don't know. You guys kind of went over that.
Yeah, we did.
And then Harry, you and I went over some numbers yesterday, which I'm gonna trust you with a lot more than myself. Yes.
I've got these straight, yesterday prosecuting attorney and I, the prosecutor brought a list, you probably don't have these, do you?
It's the same, it's the, what I sent out on that spreadsheet.
Okay.
That's just.
You sent all the commissioners, right?
Yes, I did.
You sent me.
Yes.
Maybe you got it Friday? Was it a Friday?
Uh, it was last, last Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, Thursday, yeah. Last week, Thursday.
I was around.
The other day, you were, all three of you are on the email.
Mm-hmm.
And me.
Okay.
Would you make it a little?
Sure.
I heard you made me a copy.
Well, then I responded with some additional information, but.
I'm sorry.
Did you, oh, you never got this, did you?
It's okay. Looking for the grand total. On the other column, I'd say, is it the one fourteen?
Thanks, Harry.
Uh, there's some more copies coming.
Locke, correct me if I'm wrong, but the request is, is this column here?
No, so that's. Yeah, you take that out, so that should be, so that, that is going based off of, yeah, 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 so that thirty-seven-five would go away and get redistributed. Uh, now, also to note, that seventy thousand at the bottom would not come into play until September.
That's right.
That's a position that would open in September of this year, once that position opens, the, one of the part-time, there would be less coming out of part-time also, once that seventy thousand was added.
Okay, but kind of in the overall scheme of things, this is what you were asking for for.
Generally speaking.
This many full-time positions.
Correct.
Okay, and I just put a sum of that, one, one million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Right, okay.
Compared to what's the current? Or is that just the additional column in D? That's the difference?
That's a difference.
It is.
Per, that's the difference for each specific employee.
Yeah, so. Which is down from your original request that came out in the budget, one point four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One point four five, one million.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is, that is down at least about a hundred and twenty-three thousand, something like that.
So without that new position, it's about a forty-four thousand dollars worth of adjustments, is that what I'm seeing?
Yes.
Yeah, take the seventy out, yes.
As, as I looked at the schedule the first time, the third or the second column.
Right.
That's in front of each of you, added, with all the numbers in there, added to one, three, five, six, seven, eighty.
Okay.
All right, now, we, should we modify that up, down or a little bit because of the seventy and the thirty-seven-five or not?
So the thirty-seven-five would still be there, it just gets reallocated to help cover the costs of some proposed raises I would have. The seventy thousand, I mean, that wouldn't hit until September.
So, uh.
Mid-September.
September, October, so two-thirds of it is not needed.
Correct.
But that's the one that you're anticipating is gonna pass the bar, September, is that right?
Yeah, 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 mm-hmm.
So that's basically rounded, but it's, it's forty thousand less.
Right.
Okay, so now that's a million, three fifty-six, no, it isn't, it's a million, three sixteen, right?
Yes, if you're subtracting forty from that.
And help me out on the, the part-time.
Yeah, so, I know that when initially I was getting ready to do budget stuff, initially I proposed a full-time prosecutor and a full-time investigator, and I know there was a little bit of reluctance to do that, so what I did, I did subsequently have one of my part-time prosecutors and come to me and say, hey, I'm probably leaving at some point in twenty twenty-five, I can kind of hold on and still do some part-time stuff until you can get someone else in here. We have a rule thirteen intern, uh, who we went ahead and offered employment upon passage of the bar. Initially, my thought was, well, I could just transition that part-time position to a full-time position, however, I do still have a need for at least a part-time investigator, I could probably get by with a part-time investigator for this year. So, at some point, one of those forty dollar an hour people would be gone and probably replaced with a part-time prosecutor who would, or, sorry, a part-time investigator who would be making, I haven't figured it out yet, but less than what that forty dollars an hour would be. Probably somewhere more in the region of about twenty-five dollars an hour, so the amount coming out of part-time would go down whenever that, uh, position would open up in September.
So I'm not sure exactly what to plug in for part-time, I think I had a rough and dirty yesterday.
We had a rough yesterday of about ninety-six.
Yeah.
And right now, we're at, the original request was one something, I think.
Okay, let's just put.
Yeah.
One ninety-six.
Yeah.
The, the adjusted, uh, total that, from above, of one, three, one, six, seven, eighty, needs to be boosted by about thirty-one percent for, um, fringes, or pennies. Okay, so, somebody tell me what thirty-one percent of one, three, one, six, seven, eighty is.
It's four hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars and eight cents.
So, we're looking at, uh, a million, seven, one, one, three, two, eight.
Forty-one, one eighty-one?
A million, seven, twenty-four, ninety-two, maybe, plus the ninety-six part-time. If I've done everything correctly, I have a million, eight, twenty, nine eighty-two. For personal services. Which is like sixteen thousand dollars more than that column, uh, are you with me, Mark? You've got a million, eight, uh, your budget officer, you said a million, eight, four, three, two, six.
Yeah.
I'm within, I thought it'd be coming in lower than that.
Yeah, there's PA.
Wait a minute, that's your number, oh no, that's his number, so we're at a million, eight, twenty right now.
Okay.
So, got pretty close to, to Mark's number, that, yeah, that made sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Unless you need to add a little more, I mean, it's not, the, the, our PA, our required contribution to the PA retirement, that's in that, that's in that total too.
So another sixteen.
You might want to add a little more to your number, yeah.
That'd be a million, eight, what is it, sixteen, eight?
Uh, I think, yeah, that should be an exact amount, I think I got the latest monthly.
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, it's a hundred, or sixteen, eight.
Unless that goes, I don't know.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Get a letter from them soon, increase that.
Yeah, who knows?
I would need, uh.
You'll find out when I find out.
A million, eight, thirty-eight.
Okay.
Versus a million, eight oh four.
Okay.
And we gotta maybe check these numbers later, but.
Yeah.
We're not too far away, we're thirty-four thousand dollars above the budget officer, is your current ask, I think.
Correct.
I think there's a big one missing on that spreadsheet.
On which one?
This one right here, on, under the Wilson one, she's currently.
Oh.
Oh, that contemplates a, uh, promotion for her as office manager.
Well, that's on her.
Yeah, it's, it's showing there, yeah.
That's a cost of seventy, seventy-five hundred dollars, that's not in the adjustment.
Right, because I was under the impression that that had been signed off on previously, but I guess it has not, so.
Her current salary is, right now, it's forty-eight.
Another seventy-five hundred?
Another seventy-five hundred, yes.
That's just one thing.
She got.
Million, eight forty-six rounded.
A promotion, yeah.
I'd, I'd like to clean the numbers up a little bit, but.
Well, that's something I think, well, that's something I will do, certainly going forward, making sure I got everybody's current number. Well, that's something I think, well, that's something I will do, certainly going forward, making sure I got everybody's current numbers.
Right.
Current salaries, COLAs, and then go back and make sure we're on, we're on the same page as everybody else's, everybody's asks for.
I, I think, Mark, after you do the quote cleanup, you're going to be in the neighborhood of a, a million... No, he's going to be in a million, eight, forty-six. Is his, going to be his ask. Okay. As opposed to...
A lot more.
I think that makes sense.
A million, eight, oh-four. No, eight, oh-four was your number.
No, I'm saying as in a...
Yours comes out.
As opposed to my initial ask, which contemplated two full-time positions.
Yeah, he was at two, oh, he was at two, oh, seventy-four.
Just adding up the asks, and I'm even putting seventy thousand in for...
The new guy.
The new guy. That was, so one point three, one eight versus your ask of one four, just full-time. One, four, five, one. So that is a hundred, a hundred and twenty-three thousand, which would knock your number down and let, take off some benefits too.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, yeah. I think that's, I think your quick and dirty calculation looks, looks pretty close, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's pretty close.
But what are we doing?
I mean, but are you still, are you gonna... Tell Locke the same thing you were telling everybody else?
I'm gonna go like a tentative. What did I say to Eric, first one? Was it tentative? No, tentative, yes.
Yes, yeah. Like we put this extra money in a pot, salary reserve.
We already know how he'd want to split it, because he's, he's, he's shown his cards over here.
But so was everybody else.
Yeah, they're willing to do that too.
Everybody else was too. So, I mean, everybody else had their specific requests where he's employed, so...
A tentative, yes, to...
But, just, you got a good, tell, tell Locke what everybody else...
Basically, they were gonna set up a salary pool within GR, and your people are in GR. Look at the market for the positions that you're wanting to change to those proposed salaries. Make sure they're in line, and then, could be done by the end of the third check in January.
Sure, okay.
But, what I understood was the total maybe increases about fifty-one, but you're willing to give up a position that was paying the thirty-seven-five...
Correct.
For the difference in that, so that position would go away.
Right.
So net would be about fourteen thousand, so, that's what I was hearing, so... But yes, it would go into that pool.
Okay.
All right. That's a full-time?
It was a full-time position. Oh, no, it was a full-time, uh, sorry, the eliminated position was a full-time legal assistant.
Yeah, you're gonna eliminate the open position, and you're gonna add a full-time prosecutor, right?
Add a full-time prosecutor, he'll come in in September, and a part, well, basically, the part-time, we have two part-time prosecutors right now. Basically, one of those positions would become a part-time investigator position that would not pay out at the same rate as one of the part-time prosecutors does.
Okay, so you're not even adding an investigator?
I'm not, I would just convert one of the part-time prosecutors to a part-time investigator. All I'm adding is one full-time prosecutor.
Actually, almost a half-time prosecutor, because that open position you're eliminating, right?
Well, the position I'm eliminating was a legal assistant.
But also wanting to use that for the adjustments, basically.
Actually, you're gonna, you're gonna try to get mine next year, twenty-five, with a rookie prosecutor...
Right.
Paying that rookie prosecutor less than you paid this, that thirty-seven-five, because you're only paying him for the last quarter of the year, or the last third of the year.
Right.
Yeah, I got it, so.
So, I mean, all other things being equal, you're gonna come to us, whether you're twenty-six budget, you're gonna have, wanna pay that new rookie...
Right, the...
Call him a rookie, but you're gonna pay him for a full year.
Right, right.
We would expect.
A bump, yeah.
I don't think there was anything else besides salaries, was there?
I'm ignoring questions. And you were okay, yeah, all the other numbers?
Yeah, I was...
Line items, I think that was all. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that all capital improvement stuff, yeah.
Is your HVAC working okay?
Uh, well, they're still up there.
Are they still there?
Um, yeah, it's taken a little more time than we thought. I know that they had to call in a structural engineer at one point.
They have to get a little more weight on them.
Yeah, which caused a, yeah, that caused a little bit of a delay, but it's moving along. They're getting stuff insulated up there now, so... Yeah, something like that. So they are almost done with two-thirds of the office. They need to start on the other third, once they're done with the first part. That's what I heard, I'm sad I missed it.
Yeah, I got, I got it early and it's still there.
Oh, well, yeah, that's a little...
Looked like they were getting ready to leave at six forty-five.
Let, let the record show that the commissioners were the last ones to get the, directed HVACs. First floor, third floor.
Yeah. Well, you guys asked for that though. That was the close...
That was the election stuff, yeah.
It's because we're righteous commissioners.
Yes.
We wait till the...
Right, right.
We're gonna freeze our tushes up there.
Child support.
Yes. Yeah, I'm good with Sarah's request on child support.
So Sarah's request is standing.
Yeah.
That's the other page seventy, child support now.
And that, again, I think Sarah confirmed that that entire amount still gets covered by the state, so...
It will, but of course, I, being consistent with everybody else, I only put in the COLAs on everybody, so...
So I would still ask for...
So that would be another one, yeah, another part of his office you'd have to also look at, consider, too. There, uh, I could try and pull that up if you want to, over that real quick, or look at it real quick.
Yeah, I think Sarah had to run to court in a different county, but I can talk about it a little bit.
Pull this up.
Yeah.
Sorry. Uh, here we go. Oops. It copied sideways, sorry.
Rotate.
Darn. Can you do that?
I don't know if you can, there.
PDF.
Go down and see if it puts that up there to increase it or remove it.
Gosh, I'm jazzed.
I don't know. Yeah, do you have anybody a good...
Let one of these youngsters figure it out for us.
What's this button say?
Oh, there we go.
There you go, I like that.
Are you going?
There it is, alright.
We gotta get the young one in the room.
Turn that off, how do I turn that, uh, what did I hit?
Hit escape.
Cancel.
Cancel.
Okay, so, so, yeah, uh, see, for Sarah's, um... That's a fairly substantial increase.
Yeah, Sarah's in a supervisory capacity with her being essentially sort of like the first assistant or supervising attorney of child support. I wanted to make sure her salary kind of reflected that, and her years of experience. That was something that hadn't really been touched for a while, so I wanted to make sure that we got, got her more in line with a supervisor's role, which is for that, why that big jump is there.
What increase I think is for this person here, right?
Yeah.
Current, proposed, the other two are the same.
Right.
And a little bit of bump for that. So, okay.
Yep.
So, again, we look at this, as you look at everybody, and, correct. The, these increases would still fall within your total, the grant. The state's budget.
State budget for the, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, that office is a, all, everything gets reimbursed from the state.
Right.
All right, this one.
Okay.
Get that out there.
What did I do?
America's Most Wanted?
That's not good. Oh, the ghost gun thing, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't on. I talked to them on the phone.
Well, so they, they go, they go to Bill Tack, it's kind of like their legal expert, which...
I'm glad I could take that.
I'd rather...
Yeah.
I'd rather do somebody a little more...
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Well, I appreciate that.
Oh, and John, I'll send you that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so...
Okay, um, well, let's just recap over the salaries real quick, okay?
We've hit everybody's button, all right?
Yeah, I think so.
Make sure we didn't miss any. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, EMS, it sounds like you guys were ready to approve their new, new pay scale. Um, we would have to know that one to move forward with the budget. If, if you do approve that, I like that separately approved, because that's the way we do. The sheriff has his own pay scale, and it has steps within it too. Then he, everybody would get the two point two and the five hundred. So then we'll move to Public Works. Public Works is a...
Why are we doing EMS? You're saying, yeah, we can go ahead and approve it. Why is that different than anybody else's?
Because they came up with a new pay scale, and you guys had a...
So if the auditor comes up with a pay scale, we can just...
If you approve it, you previously had approved EMS's scale, and they, they've been on that scale for two or three years.
I know, we didn't approve the new scale yet, did we?
No, I said, that's what I'm saying, you'll have to approve it.
I think you were all leaning toward it.
Oh, I thought you said we just did approve it, or where we...
You gave verbal. I think all three of you agreed to Eric's proposal, right? Day one of, is, yesterday.
Kind of like, if he feels like it's gonna work, I'm still not necessarily convinced, but...
Oh, okay.
Okay, well...
Couldn't remember, I thought...
Well, I think there's always, uh, there was some hesitancy on the, this number of years on the schedule.
Oh, that was the ten-year cap.
Nine or ten cap part. So there's a pretty big jump for everybody at the start of it too, so, we're gonna do that for other people. In our little side pool, you got some asking for two percent, ten percent. Locke was just here, he's got, you know, a bunch of different amounts, anywhere from thousand to five thousand, and...
Well, I think that's where Dave leaned us about, uh, but she's getting there by going, started with EMS.
Go the, get the other funds over with. But you can change your mind, okay, EMS is, if you, we will redo their budget based on the new rate scale.
So...
You guys will still have to approve that if that's what you want to do.
Okay, so you're gonna put all the asks in there?
It basically is in that one.
So, is there gonna be a separate line for what, except for EMS probably doesn't have a separate line, but these other places, we've kind of talked about this.
I guess I'm just saying, it's hard for me to say yes to them and then come back and say no to the prosecutor. And, you know, some of them may not get their full ask, maybe we give them a partial order, we see where that pod is. We got one that asks for a ten percent across the board.
Right, okay.
And we're gonna throw that in there and say, oh, okay, well, you asked for it, you get it.
I'll restate. EMS, so, everybody what's in the budget right now is the two point two and the five hundred, for sure, that's in there. So EMS, they proposed a new rate scale. You'll have to approve it or not approve it. The sheriff's department, again, that COLA is in there. He's on a rate scale for different levels of, uh, positions and how long they've been in those positions. You guys approved that a while back, so we're still on that. But then, Public Works, you guys approved their career plan, so what's in the budget now is their career plan and...
And COLA.
And the COLAs. But he's asking for an additional eighty-two with the, with the plan.
So...
I'm suggesting putting that into the...
In that line, that's called pool or whatever.
Yes, for that to then to be reviewed.
Two years ago, we called it salary reserve.
Right.
Those, that account's set up, we could do the same thing, this time the account's already there.
Right.
Remind me, does the career plan forego the COLA? I mean, they got these built-in raises, right, every year?
Not every year, just certain people when they hit the threshold of, you've seen there was four or five...
Because EMS has steps that's each year.
Right.
And they did not have a COLA in theirs.
Right, it's got their built-in COLA.
Yeah.
Public Works pay scale is more based on years of services they transition through additional skills.
Yeah. It's not guaranteed.
It's just like a one-time, one-time boost.
So many years, yeah.
Well, if they go to, they get promoted from operator one to two or whatever. That doesn't mean that just because they have two or five years in that they get that.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so putting that aside, and then you get to the big one, which has a lot of people involved, which is GR. GR, we have the nurses, the collector's office, building maintenance, we have the PA's office, child support. And, you know, when the collector came up and asked for what he's doing, then that, to me, would have to look at the commission people, the auditor people, the clerk people, and the recorder people as well, so...
Treasure.
Treasure, I'm sorry, treasure. Um, so, all of that could be, and we need to look at all of that, we need to look at how it affects the other departments. So, putting aside a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in GR, because right now, the nurses were forty-two thousand, you know, I was just trying to add up all of that. We're probably about, about a hundred thousand already. That's without adding in the recorder, the collector, the auditor, the commission, the treasurer. So giving that some money for merit, not merit, for marking, for market adjustments that may happen to certain positions throughout the year. Like, the health department is really just concentrating on the nurses now. You know, if Sheila does, and she has done it in the past, looked at those nurses. And if it's, if it's warranted, then we'll come to you and ask you to approve that separately out of this money.
I backtrack one...
Yep.
On the COLA.
Yep.
You okay with the proposed COLA?
Yes, we should start there, I guess.
You're all okay with the two point two percent plus five hundred?
Sure.
The equivalent total is about three, is right at three percent.
Yeah, there's a thousand different ways we could do that.
Yeah, I had asked you to say, if you did a one percent for merit, but the way we're doing this, I don't probably...
Yeah, I did figure, we were, I think we were right, one, well, one percent on general fund is about eighty, eighty thousand.
At the risk of being just the, uh, not going along with the crowd, I'd, I'd make it two percent. Plus five hundred dollars.
Just two percent, okay.
But I'll probably get out there. That's just...
I just...
I, I, I was trying to come as close to three percent total, so I think I looked at two percent, then I went up to two and a half, and it was... One was a little under, one was a little over, so I kind of right went in the middle.
And to stay with what Mark is saying, you know, we looked at the state, we looked at the city, we, you know, to make sure that we were in line with what they're doing.
What did, the city was a month ahead of us on the year end, what did they do?
What did I say? I had that all written down.
And the state, we don't, we don't know the state's number yet, do we?
Well, in July, they gave...
In July, they had...
Well, yeah, okay, but we don't know the next one.
They're always six, we're always, I mean, we're gonna be every six months different.
Governor Parson jumped out there, when he saw social security do an eight point three, he did an eight point three, right? And we were behind in the ball.
And social security, yeah, they were, they were less than three.
Social security is two point five, I think.
Yes.
It's, so, social security for twenty-twenty-five is gonna be two point five percent over twenty...
Yeah.
So...
We're in the ballpark.
We're in the ballpark either with a two or two-two. Or two point zero or two point, we're, we're in the ballpark.
Right, so...
I'm going with two point two, so it's just, just...
Leave it two-two right now. If we make some adjustments somewhere, we need to run that point two percent, that might... I'm gonna do, because I'm, because after today, I'm gonna start tweaking these numbers, so...
I don't want to get down in the weeds on this, but we've never, uh, I've only been here four years, but we've never had this five hundred plus.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Well, not, not while I've...
Not in the four years, okay.
So, but, and, and, and I'm not looking out for elected officials here, but elected officials can have a COLA if everybody else gets a COLA.
Yeah, they can have that.
That, that is a COLA, five hundred per...
I got it.
Plus, so that can be added, that would be added to the elected official salaries too, whatever COLA you decide.
Yeah.
And we've had, heard nothing but in the last few years, compression, compression, compression. And, you know, when you give a flat percentage every year, as they say, the higher gets higher and the, the lower doesn't move as much. So, we used to have every other year that we would do that, a flat amount.
I like the idea of that five hundred bucks, because that family that's in the forty thousand dollar area, their, their eggs and bacon and gas and everything else has gone up, just like anybody.
Yes.
A hundred thousand.
That's right.
A couple, a few six-figure employees we got.
And you remember when the state, one time the state just said anybody who was below seventy...
Right.
Got a, got a bump, and those above seventy didn't. What happened is some people at sixty-nine jumped over the people that were at seventy.
Yeah, that was, that would not work too well.
That didn't work very well, yeah.
Yeah, but that's exactly, I think it's a, I think it's time.
Okay, so, uh, have you run through everybody, or you will go through everybody?
We're done with everybody, we've, we've heard from everybody.
So, so if, if you don't mind, we'll just make those adjustments. I mean, if you have a different dollar figure that you want for that, I mean, a hundred and fifty, two hundred, whatever you want for GR, um, or we could just leave it at a hundred and fifty and see where we end up, budget-wise.
Well, we will start running, I'll start running the salaries again, updating most current, always-
Yep.
Look at, we start spreadsheet with the most current, and then add the COLA. Then we'll look at what everybody, each department asks in addition to that. That difference will be, be that, I mean, we can round it, but if we, but after we do that computation, then we'll, we'll, we'll know.
We'll know where we are.
Propose a number, we'll put in the salary reserve.
Johnny's got it.
No, I gotta pee. So, just out of curiosity, do you know a rough number, what that point two percent is? If we do, two percent versus point two, what?
Oh, one percent was-
Twenty thousand dollars?
At least in general revenue, one percent is eighty thousand, about eighty thousand, so, yeah.
It's not much.
It's not much.
I was just trying to figure out if that would help our CRM pool, or the ACRM or pool, so.
Well, just remember, we have passed off a little cost to the employee this year for their health insurance, keep that in back of your mind.
That point two percent could offset, would offset the additional health insurance costs.
For the ones that took the PPO, right?
That's, it's gonna go up more in the years to come, I just, I gotta be ready for that, I'm afraid.
I don't doubt.
We need to prepare everybody for that to-
Yeah.
We can eat it and have these great benefits, then we keep running into public works. They, they're gonna have people that are gonna leave and, you know, they, they might be able to operate a quarter million dollar piece of equipment, but for thirty dollars an hour, they can go down here and do some remodeling.
And I, I have sympathy for that, it's just the way of the world right now, nobody's staying.
I, I'm just saying that we got people that are, well, if I do other stuff, we're gonna lose them to that stuff. Jailers, I mean, you wanna be locked up inside the jail for, what's their hours, twelve-hour shifts? So, go do construction for eight hours and, you know.
Oh, I understand, but-
That's why we're losing a lot of it, it's, there's money out there.
So, we'll figure, we'll re-figure this, um, probably won't meet again, we'll meet tomorrow for the health insurance at one, right?
Yeah, we've talked about maintenance at all, because I've got a piece of paper here on my desk.
I would suggest those few, that you want Sheila to concentrate on and to get started. If you want to do specific ones before, um, and have it in the budget, we can do that. If you wanna address maintenance, starting salary, if you wanna look at the nurses now. Sheila's gotta get some direction on which ones you want her to start with first.
I would, I would look at maintenance, I would look at, at equipment operator ones. Nurses, I, I think you've already done the nurses, so basically you just need to, um, I, I think some of these, and even at emergency management, uh, there are-
But we, but I think right now, Sheila can, she's got the nurses done. Building maintenance, she can compare that to what, um, Public Works is talking about with their maintenance people. And she's already kind of done that too, so she can give a report on that to you guys and we could, she could give a report before the budget's finalized, but, but we just definitely gotta get going on the numbers.
What day do I need to get that scheduled to you, available to the public?
Uh, I put it in the paper already, and I think it's gotta be available ten days before the public hearing, for the public. It's gotta be in the paper for five, so. So, I need it by the twenty, eighth or the twenty-seventh.
I gotta a week or more to at least get that all.
Did he ever make a presentation on this?
He did when we, uh, last week.
Greg, is that who you're asking about?
Yeah, Greg, did we put his ask in?
His was not a formal ask, he gave a ballpark.
You, you put, you put a number in there for him, yeah.
And he did give me comparison information, however, his comparison information included Springfield, which is out of line with any rational comparison. I pulled Boone, because their job descriptions are most similar to ours, he has reviewed and revised them. Um, and the spreadsheet I gave you is, is my concern with-
Oh, this came from you then?
It did.
Okay.
And, and the reason I have concerns and did that comparison is because Public Works' lowest paid and maintenance are very much similar amounts right now. I know that, um, I know that Greg wants to, to validate his people and he wants to vouch for them and, and he wants to have the ask for them as well. My concern in comparing those two, who are very much in line dollar-wise currently or with where we're going, is that all of our equipment operators are CDO required, so they're licensed, they're certified to operate the heavy equipment. To me, that's a little different than custodial and maintenance, not a lot of variance, but there is some there when we look at the comparison, that's the only thing I think we need to consider.
And those are the type things we wanna definitely send them through HR to be, oh, comparing.
I guess we could throw in, I'm glad you mentioned maintenance, because that's the only, well, Locke changed his request, so he's not asking, really asking for anymore, he initially did, but Greg is asking for another full-time position. That might, that's probably something we'd wanna throw in, uh, this pool, or reserve, ACRM pool. Cause your first, I mean, I don't know there, but I think your comment was, let's see what this EMS, uh, cleaning contract comes at, and then reconsider, you might consider.
Yes, because, you know, we could have, uh, I, I think they're doing a little bit of, not, not lobby, so, janitorial, but over three oh eight.
I just thought of that, that's the only, now that's the only other department.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask.
What kind of maintenance are we doing? What kind of maintenance are we doing?
Oh, no, nevermind.
Sheila, what kind of maintenance are we doing?
What kind of maintenance are we doing?
Maintenance workers, what kind of maintenance are we doing?
Filters and-
I understand sometimes we'll have a little bit of plumbing, but we, we're getting a lot of stuff bid out that, if we had true maintenance workers, we should be able to do this stuff ourselves.
We are using a lot of vendor dollars for maintenance and repairs on some of that stock that could fall under the maintenance job description. In comparison for what I know they're doing, which is not gonna be a hundred percent complete, theirs falls closer to custodial than maintenance and the job duties that they are not contracting out.
So, that's, that's what I would argue, I just think when you have true maintenance workers, then I really have no problem giving them a better pay to do maintenance work. I mean, because we're, we're bidding out, doing power spraying on a garage door, doing some painting, uh, they're working on the floors up there in the courthouse and the, uh, they're trying to run cables and some flooring needed to be cut to get down underneath them, that's, that's something we could have had some money there to do. It's not, doesn't take a whole nother scale of knowledge to do it.
Well, and last year, we did talk about in maintenance for them, Greg passed out books, like little notebooks to all of them to keep track of the tasks they did. I think that happened for a short while and then he went out on leave and it kind of got just dropped. I really have no idea, like, in a big picture look, of what they do as far as maintenance on a routine basis. I know what his list shows that he expects them to do, but I don't know how much we're actually doing.
That's what I would challenge them to do, is get us a list-
Twenty twenty-four's budget.
To see if they're truly are doing maintenance or not, because we can, we can hire people out. Empty trashcans, do floors, stairwell has a same piece of paper in there probably from, it might've been last Christmas, I don't know. But we've written dust in the, things, the ceiling, things get wiped, and those are one of the things when we had our separate meetings. So, y'all need to just be intuitive and if there's something needs, but be done, bring it to us. And I know Greg's been out, in and out, and, and stuff with his own issues, so not having leadership around as much, but it's where they can step up.
They do snow, or they do grass cutting, they, they do-
We can hire that out too, pretty easy.
It's gonna be a lot cheaper, we just keep doing it.
We, we don't even have to have all the storage room there for lawn mowers, we don't have to have maintenance on the lawn mowers. There's, there's a lot to it, I mean, that, I have my grass cut too, I can easily do my grass.
Nineteen, yeah, okay, so it'd be the same, that's nineteen.
That's just kind of where I'm at with that, I, I think we can hire a lot of that out, so.
Nineteen, yeah, so he's-
He's happy.
Is that it?
Are there, are the maintenance guys, uh, moving your furniture today?
I don't know.
How about your furniture?
Greg still, he wasn't sure, he said he'd get it done sometime this week, so.
And what I also, on the salary, I just wanna recap, um, as far as FTS, EMS, um, two addition, you had three this year, um, and then the sheriff, two, one being maybe funded through a different source. Um, and then one asked for in maintenance, and then the way I understand it, the PA is really asking for another one as far as, we, we need to confirm that.
Asking for an additional attorney, but taking out a, that legal, legal assistant.
So, I wanna confirm that.
His net request is-
I think net might be zero there.
Net is, net FTS is zero, is zero, but, yeah.
Can you think of any other FTS that would have been in there that I missed?
Additional, requests for additional, no.
Okay.
What, what, if you were to ask, what is the FTE today for the county?
The total count?
This one has general GR.
Three fifty-one? So, part timers on our, it's on page eighteen, there's a summary of our personnel.
One thirteen. No.
No?
No. Leave all the part timers out.
Okay.
Right, because again, they're not benefit eligible.
Those that are getting benefits.
When I prepared my, uh, budget, we counted three fifty-one, so.
That was in November, or?
End of October, yeah. Three fifty-one.
Well, depending on, the ask is, um, five, if not six with the PA.
Well, a little bit is very explainable, we have another endless, uh, location, right?
I mean, you have already approved those.
Right.
So the other two were communications.
Communications, there's two additional communications.
Yes.
And I, where, you, you go out there and look at our nine one one.
Communication is not the same as someone who's, uh, helping the world, what the county's doing.
Absolutely, um, dispatch.
Is dispatch, yeah.
Yeah.
And they are medically certified, which-
They're not all EMTs anymore.
They're for dispatching, they're medically certified.
They're certified to do a medical dispatch.
Yes.
As a, yeah, as opposed to-
Yeah, I thought you meant they were EMTs, they're not EMTs.
The other nine one one, yes, it's-
They used to be EMTs. Okay, I just wanted you to know that. So Mark will get it together and then we'll, do you guys wanna have another meeting to see the, to see the changes?
Well, I think you'll circulate those, by, by the way, when it comes, is the only way we're gonna see it is by looking at the, the, the full budget, or can you break it out just by?
Thank you.
You can go in BSNA and look per department, per fund.
I'd like to see a schedule, this is my ad.
Sure.
I did a schedule where I went through and I picked every one of your personal, what do you call it? Salary and benefits budget.
Salary's good.
By department.
Okay.
What you had, what, uh, I'm sorry, what the ask and then what your number was. Now, the ask is changing a little bit. I could give you this to what it was when we started this process.
And that's by department or?
By department, and there's, you know, there's twenty departments, I guess, and change. And we put another column for the new ask.
What I have to prepare is, for the public, is something like this.
Yeah, I, I, this is-
And then I just add a column, what the different, what the change from the auditors recommended to the commission proposed.
I was just trying to get rid of, not get rid of, but I didn't, I didn't want to see this thing just repeated with new numbers. It could be shortened to this, and I'll do it if you don't, you know.
Okay, uh, this, this is what we have to, we don't, I, we don't print, I don't print out copies of this, I just give it to, that, well, maybe one copy or I give it, I think I give it PDF to Debbie, so she has it available for any public, uh-
Request.
Request.
What you put in the paper is only this big, right?
What I put in the paper is this.
I mean, when you broadcast and publish.
It's just announcing the public hearing and when it is, and saying the budget's available.
That's her putting, that's what you put in.
We put it in, you, you guys are responsible for that by statute, that you have to put the public hearing in there and se, tell them that the budget is available for review.
Yeah.
Come see us, if you want to, we don't publish this whole-
No, I knew you didn't publish it all, but you knew, you see school districts, they publish about ten lines of information.
Oh, that's our, that's our annual published financial statement, that doesn't go out till June.
We do that after the audit.
We do something similar, but that's after our audit financial statements are out, yeah, that's not a budget. We don't have to publish the budget, we don't have to.
But we do put it on our website after we're done.
Yeah.
After it's approved, but we'll get you something on the salary things, once you get down, I can do it for them too. Okay, so do you wanna meet again, how do we wanna, let's look at the calendar here.
Just as soon as you get that to us, it's time to sit down and meet.
Yeah, I do too.
I'm just gonna say I'm, next week, so.
We could have a meeting at our new location across the street.
No, well, if you, if you, if you put it on the agenda.
Good, yeah.
You do have an agenda on the twenty-fourth?
There's no big table.
Yeah.
We got one tomorrow at one o'clock.
Well, we are not gonna be ready by-
What?
We got other-
What are you doing?
We got payroll, I mean, Mark, you gotta be ready.
Oh, gosh, uh, this'll take us a week or more, I'm thinking like the week of Christmas.
Twenty-four.
That's about the time I gotta get this to Debbie, to, for public.
So twenty-four.
We could do the twenty-fourth or you can come in on the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh, whatever you'd prefer.
If we can do that, twenty-four, we don't have that much, we do have Stacy Buttons.
You are gonna have a regular meeting on Christmas Eve?
Yeah, she, she will.
Did you see where the governor gave, uh, Christmas Eve afternoon off?
That's gonna be your next ask.
Would you, would that be half, double, triple time?
Yeah, stop, stop.
That doesn't, that, that, that double holiday doesn't go away until January one, right?
Right. Well, those two holidays in New York are one.
I heard nothing.
EMS has already got, I knew your, our Christmas Eve in there.
And New Year's Eve, and New Year's Eve. That's already been out there, so, okay, so we're gonna add this to the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do my best, if I can't, then we can always call a special meeting the day after, two days after Christmas, right?
You know, send it to, to it.
So some, did some departments have asks for adjustments for that separate pool? And it's not getting included, or we're gonna take a decision for everybody?
We're gonna put everybody in that.
Yeah, I mean, you heard from most of them, um, PA, child support, the health department, the collector, um, building maintenance.
Did we put one in for Debbie?
Judy, as well.
Put one in for Debbie.
Commission, she had, she had a-
They'd ask for more than that.
Yeah, 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 it did. But the big thing is, you guys do have that.
I'm using as an example, are we gonna put a three percent or ten percent in there, ten percent asking you?
Well, in that pool should be your all's direction for department heads, I'm gonna ask you that, right? So you control all the department heads.
But you wanna ask us now, so we can put that in that separate fund?
No, it's part of that budget.
Cause we need to treat ours the same way as we are everybody else's.
Right, all the department heads.
Budget document is made available for, for public ten days prior to the public hearing on the budget, so. I put penciled in December twenty-third, but I think that'd get me more than ten days, I think I got, I think I can.
I can look to see what I put it in the paper.
So January seventh, right, is a public hearing for the budget, so. Oh, yeah, I got till, I'd say the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh deadline to get that to you, but I'll try to get it so we can talk about it on the twenty-fourth, so.
Yeah.
All right. Mark, I put it in there for, this is bad, why love it? So it's running on the eighteenth, nineteenth, twenty, twenty-four, it's gotta run five days, so anything after the twenty-third.
Okay, oh, okay.
But it's not quite ten days, more, more.
Decisions next week, aren't we? If you gotta run that stuff so many days before.
Well, when I give that to them, I, I just run the ad.
The ad goes in for five days and then-
Yes, then that's ten days before the last day, to be, um- Yes, then that's ten days before the last day, to be, um, available, yeah, for the public. They can request it, I always tell them, hey, this is not the final budget, right, um, the final budget will be adopted on the seventh, these figures could change, that's all.
So, I do have to, at least the twenty-fourth, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, get this. But I think by statute, I can also backtrack ten days from seven, that would be my final deadline, and I, that would be, I think, Friday, the twenty-seventh, so.
Okay, so, I'm gonna get done, if you guys are not done, Matt, if you guys are done for the day. Did you have something, Greg, I can see him coming?
It's not on the agenda, but the backlog for the courthouse is leaking very bad, don't know if we can get parts for it, so we may be having to replace that, it's in the old jail, so.
What was leaking?
Backflow. It's a device.
Backflow for what, the plumbing, or for?
Yeah, plumbing, if the city loses water pressure, it doesn't let the water contaminate.
That's the same one we got up here that was making all the god awful noises?
Yeah.
So, is it back there making noises, or it's?
No, it's drunk, it's running water, it's running water out the overflow, so, they're gonna try to find a rebuild kit, but if they can't, they'll have to replace the whole thing.
Is that us, or is that the city?
Nope, it's us.
Where's that going to?
Where's it going to, it goes.
Coming from and going to, can we?
It comes from the main water supply coming into the building after the year, and then it goes to the courthouse. He's the courthouse and going down.
Just started the whole building?
Yeah, it's a three-inch pipe.
So, that's just in, just informing them about.
Who's inconvenienced right now because of this?
Nobody, we're letting water, it's just a small, steady trickle out the drain, to the drain, but, once we, they find if they can get the parts, or we have to replace it, this could affect the whole courthouse.
Affect it in that it won't, that they won't have any water?
They won't have any water probably for an hour.
Okay.
Just let us know, Melanie know, and we'll get that notice out to everybody.
So, this is payroll week, so we'll have a new list of current, the current employee salary schedule.
We're going back tomorrow then, for anything?
Yes, one thirty, thirty insurance.
Oh, yeah, I'll put it in a different calculation.
One thirty tomorrow.
One thirty tomorrow.
Okay, that's the one you added yesterday?
Yes.
Kinda moved it from today to.
Changed it from the eight to the one thirty.
And as far as I know, we were trying to adjust that on that agenda, so.
Okay.
We'll see you tomorrow, or?
Anything else on budget?
Oh, there's lots more, but not today.
What's that?
There's a lot more on budget, but not.
Yeah, yeah, right, per now, yeah.
I make a motion which stands where he says, for the fourth, thirty-one P.
Do we?
Judge, I'm sorry, did you wanna talk to them?
No, I just, I think, I know you would still be commissioning.
We're, we're about done, so they're gonna go out of session.
Okay, did you second my motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.